You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
Tonight's record is Select Board meeting. It is September 6, 2023. The time is 6:39 PM. And present in the room are Select Board members Samara Slick, Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, Paul Madelinski, and myself, John Maggio. Our recording clerk Vanessa Blue, our road supervisor, Iber Blackfield, and I see on the screen, Fact TV is also recording this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda at this time?
Bruce?
I want to move the unfinished business up to 30, up further up as your priorities. Somewhere between number 6, number 7, something maybe 4, 5, 7.
You want unfinished business before new business?
That'd be good. We can all get some.
Any problems with that, anybody? Any other changes to the agenda at this time? Moving on, members of the public. There are none present. Either scheduled or unscheduled. The minutes from, on the break of the 10 minutes from August 16, 2023, it's sitting at my printer. Does anybody have a copy of these minutes we've been writing now? All the minutes?
Yes.
Do you mind going through the page one? Any changes to the minutes on page?
I haven't found any yet.
Alright, and I'll do this.
Just a bit of a job.
Does anybody have any changes or edits on the minutes on page one?
I'll copy it please.
Nope.
Alright, we're just gonna hold for a second. Thanks, Dan. Have any changes or edits on page one or six? Anybody have any changes on page 2 or 6?
Dan, did you?
I see that too.
Yeah, uh, C, I see. It, I'm wondering if this was the meeting. I think I had offered a comment, end of consideration or I made a comment. It's a lot like a sales solicitation. And someone around the table said yes. And I think Samara indicated that we are holding off at this time spending any money to that. And I indicated I agree with that. I think Paul might have echoed a similar comment. Doesn't need to be here. It sort of happened, but when we had a discussion, the representative of the Brookline Meeting House last Friday morning, the person indicated they had no knowledge that there was dislike or that it wasn't looked upon with favor at that time. In fact, I think last, well, that's a long issue we can talk about later. I, so there was, there were a series of comments that happened at the table. Unfortunately today, it was obviously. I did, I can't remember if it was earlier than that or August 16th. It's been three weeks. Hard to tell.
I may have, I don't recall, but I may have offered to share that with the Meeting House committee, the chairperson, and did not, if that was the question. But other than that, anything else?
So I guess the bottom line, it may need to be added, it may not, depending on what the donor's handling.
Is that about the, whoever is getting the, the, the?
Yes. That's the question. It's not, we're probably, we're covering the analysis, we're covering the whole range. If that works. So if they're trying to do a plan, that's into the, I had a separate conversation with the chairman.
Oh, if you're doing a filing, you'll be able to.
But first, I don't know how detailed. It's supposed to be a survey of what happened in here. So, so the item is, today you're saying is that there should be more detail on this particular item?
Well, in light of the fact, I normally wouldn't comment on it, but in light of the fact, the chair of that committee indicated she wasn't aware and wasn't fat asking us to execute a document last Friday morning.
She didn't read the, she hadn't read the minutes.
Okay.
Here, she hadn't read the minutes to see that information. And I personally, if I had said that, I would bring it to her attention.
I have no idea what you said.
And put her on notice. That happens.
Yeah. So I guess.
So do you want me to go back and look at the video?
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, you too. And then I put a sentence together and put it in an email. And I want to amend the minutes for the, for the, for the minutes.
They would be amending the minutes.
Right.
Because you're applying, can we amend it? Can we amend it if they need to be?
The following?
Yes, you can amend it next, next, next day.
Okay, let's see.
As far as what to do.
This is what I would do.
Right, and now the whole. Do I send out a draft, everybody? Again?
I'll just.
Send a draft, everybody, and then I will.
I'll send it over. Are, and then we all have access to it.
No, not, no, because it's gonna.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of like tabled until the next meeting.
So.
But I think we should continue reviewing the rest of it, which is my.
Any other items on page 6? Moving on, any other items on pages 3 to 6? Moving on, any other items on page 4 of 6? Any items on page 5 of 6? Any items on page 6 of 6? I mean, the most, like, the most likely, we approved the minutes as amended, noting that we will review item 3C at the next Select Board Minute meeting on September 20. For detail. May I have a second? I did like a little discussion. Carrying out all those favor of amending the minutes as requested does suggest that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any say? Thank you, Vanessa. Really, I'm saying something. Well, thank you. Okay, the next item, I'm going to have, I'm going to stage the special team of recovery still minutes. I do have some information for everyone, but it technically ended up not being, or we need to go over the rules. It technically wasn't immediate because there were only two elected officials present, Stan Noga and myself. But I do want to.
Is it elected officials or elected selection?
Or elected.
Or, or select board members.
Well, any elected officials, because there's three.
Really?
Like, it's, it's I, Tan, to, here, there's three elected officials.
So it's officials and not selected? Oh.
Well, in, in a meeting, calling a meeting, you have three official, elected officials.
Okay, good to know.
That's what I was, that's what I interpreted. What's, what I just passed out to you is just the attendance list for the meeting. And it has emails and phone numbers in case Stan or I aren't available for some reason. And someone has to pick up the phone, run this. Here is the information. But I can summarize to you that since we went through, we looked inside and reviewed our 10 different sites for remediation, for mitigation, indoor repairs, pre-disaster condition. And at 1:20, we got in cars and we went to four different sites and looked on. You can see, it was quite cool. We walked into this meeting and there were those people here, like.
Yes, yeah.
But, um, they were, some of them were trainees, so.
Who met them?
They went, we worked on about 20 after 1:00 until about 5:00, 5:00, I can't remember.
That's fantastic.
So it was a very warm day. And they got a creation.
And this storm, this, this?
This is, yeah, this particular storm.
Oh, this, it's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. That's 4720. So, um. Yeah, so that's, so, so that's the first storm in this, you know, that's what we're talking about. It's in the thunderstorms and. Your information is in future, for the storm. Dan, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, I don't know what the experience was in the 4261 storm. But the people that sat around that table, the fans, very, very helpful, real virtual, willing to do whatever they could to make it easier for us. Paul has asked a lot of questions. She had answers on the tip of her tongue.
Mark was invaluable.
Mark was invaluable as well. I think it went really well for that time to be here. I was impressed at the level of investigation they did, measuring responsibly. The depth, width, length, where was the pavement at, how much further do we? It was unbelievable to see what they were, what they did the first time. In terms of their visits, yeah, they did it that nicely. We can get it all done. No, they won't have to.
So there was, so there were four specific sites? We went to four sites, split them, involved a full spolder? Stolen line spolders that they wanted to go to.
They stood up there.
The inlet was a stolen line spolder.
Yeah. Right. Yes.
So we went to the one of the, one of the bathrooms in Brookline. We went to the one at the Curs, Curs and Hill Road Bridge, like New Barnes House. There's a small arch there. We went to, uh, the Rigs Bridge above us. Actually, it's a seven. And they went out, we went to Cutney Mountain, we went to, um, Ellaware Road and looked at the six foot spolder there, the, close to the Townsend one, uh, which has developed a crack. And, um, it's gonna be an expensive project to do. So we're waiting on them to do a cost analysis for us at this time.
And we pay 90, we pay 10%?
It depends. Some of the work is 75%. Some of the work will be 90%. Some of the work will be 100%. It depends.
Is some of it for pollen mitigation?
Right, which means to improve it beyond pre-disaster conditions.
Uh huh.
So that it won't happen again versus bringing it up to, bringing it just to the pre-disaster conditions. So there's, there's.
There may be some grants available if there's any time to work on some of these.
Some of that, right.
Or, so we're looking at our options, and which way to prepare all these land.
Okay.
Yeah, we were all very, and our number one representative.
Oh, our, okay.
He knows everything about.
Yeah, he was a trainer for FEMA people. So was he?
He was like a.
Michael Behrson.
Behrson, yeah. Washington D.C.
He, uh, he had every answer basically.
Alright, so, anything else?
PDNC, what was that name? Never mind.
Yeah. Alright, accounts payable warrant. You have two accounts payable warrants. I'll read the first one out to you. I'd like to make a motion to.
You have two?
Yes, because, yes, I'll see you in a second. I'd like to make a motion to approve check warrant 247B dated 8, 1823 for $50, because that was the amount that was not included on the original purchase billing for the wire transfer for the wheeled excavator. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Moving on, all those in favor of approving warrant, accounts payable warrant 247B for $50, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Alright, I'll take this around. I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable check warrant number 2410 dated September 6, 2023 in the amount of $34,813.61. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Good, because I have one too. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure. I, I know that, uh, the Clark's bill was on that, on that rezignance warrant, is that?
The warrant that got mailed out today?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would like to ask Mark. I mean, I don't know if anybody here is actually qualified enough to say, yeah, the job was done correctly according to the, according to the specs.
Mark, Mark is the one who did the specs. Mark, you inspect the spolder installation that was done by E.S. Clark on Cutney Mountain Road?
I did. I, I actually worked upon the mountain and on my way, I went through in the morning, talked with him. We talked about certain specifics and making sure that they got through the ledge. And so when I came off the mountain, I inspected it and I thought that it amounted to at least. And I'm still planning to apply a little gravel over the top surface where everything is settling. Just.
I guess my question though is, if the work done according to the, our, to be, you know.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and Mark Picking says that Mark, Mark Bills is the one to approve this. But he wasn't available and he would come in, but Mark is.
Mark Picking.
If, if, if Mark Bills wouldn't be available to check something, he would come in.
Okay.
That's good. Um, any other discussion? Stan?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious about the invoice descriptions for the first two and then also the third one. The first two would appear to be FEMA related, but yet after the semicolon, for 4720 semicolon, there is the term GIA.
Rancen aid.
And I don't know if either of those really are a ransom aid, whether it makes a difference from an accounting standpoint, but it certainly does for the third item for $840, which was a GIA completely and not FEMA 4720.
I circled that on my notes as well. I'm not sure. I know FEMA, FEMA is a grant. FEMA reimbursements are considered grants. It's not a ransom aid though. So I question the GIA as well.
Um, I think it was, uh, it, I got the idea that that was the work done on Hill Road that did have to do with our.
No, it says 4720, which is the.
Wait, I'm not looking at it. I don't know where my copy is. I'm sorry.
Third one of that will help.
Third one down, because it's, this is, A.S. Clark, FEMA, oh, FEMA. And I see what you mean. So it's FEMA, FEMA, and chief. But you have to look at the, the first two are labeled GIA. That's the account number that they seem to have. The question I would have is, are they putting GIA? And that was sort of my, I wondered about the two, the FEMA and the GIA stuff um, in the same account, because it shouldn't be. And I, and I will, I will, um, I will talk to Melissa about it. Because we're talking about a bunch of other stuff as far as year-end stuff. So if I make myself a note, which I will do.
Thanks, everybody.
Also are questioning the GIA classification. Well, you know, what I think is, is I think they blended two classifications into one line item.
Seems like it.
And so while technically it's just an accounting convenience to separate everything line by line in your general ledger, you don't have to. You could put everything under grants and then set up a separate spreadsheet. But I don't think they're doing that. So we should ask them to say, if there's anything that's really a GIA expenditure that is not FEMA, you shouldn't mix the two, is the point, right? And so we should tell them to make a sep, if they want to separate GIA work, then they can make a separate line item, a separate account should be. A separate account line, expense account line should be created, right?
That's critical, because we, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have completed the closeout of the GIA grant that we got, that that money was used for, if that was the project for GIA alone. And I think if I were to send that up, AOT might say, wait a minute, was this GIA or was this FEMA? And I don't want to create any problems.
They would probably not see the, the, the accounting. They would see the invoices. They asked for the invoices and the invoices would be.
Okay.
Which brings me to my question about approving or AP warrant. Without being able to, I'm, I mean, I'm thinking maybe I should just come in early, because I know we get the AP warrant via email, but we don't get the invoices.
Right.
And so you can't go back and forth. By the time we're approving it, we can't approve it. I mean, we really should go through and check this right now.
Right, that's what I can, I can, I come in at 6 o'clock to do that. And so that was my question was the GIA. And this first invoice for $17,380 is for FEMA.
No, that was clear, because I remember, you remembered that. So that's clearly FEMA. Do you mind if I mark your?
Alright, I'll make a copy of your markings, so you can.
So that's clearly FEMA. And I have, I have communicated with them and said, make sure you split the two FEMA numbers, 4720 and 4621, because it's going to be an issue.
Exactly.
Especially now.
Very good.
This invoice, so what's the? The second invoice, which is for $2,995, although they broke it up into different lines on the accounting form. It includes, uh, work on Ed Schaefer's Drive, Curse Road, Cutney Mountain Road, and gravel. And some of it is FEMA.
Do they, have they labeled what's FEMA and what's GIA?
Not, A.S. Clark did not label it.
A.S. Clark needs to do that.
But the, Judy did. FEMA 4720 as the services. I'll make a photocopy for everybody. How's that?
Yeah, that would be great, because that's, that was always a problem. I'm familiar, I'm familiar with this problem.
I don't believe there's anything on Curse Road that is left over from 4621.
No, it should all be GIA. So what we're going to do is we'll make, I'll cross out FEMA and I'll circle GIA on the ones that are GIA. But I, it sounded like they get one invoice with a lot of different.
Yeah, it's probably confusing for that, what extra work to find out. She's probably calling them and saying, or talking with Mark or both.
No, yeah, probably both. I know Judy said she calls Mark, but she calls Mark. Yeah. Because then we can, we can have them do a journal entry to separate those, uh, which will make it simpler. But at the end of the day, you do kind of end up putting it all on a spreadsheet. Do you send that in for Stan, since you're doing the grants?
Well, I, I, it was easy before, because, um, although I did it, in theory, Wyndham Regional was supposed to do it.
Thank you.
But the way, the methodology of the last one that I did, the state streamlined things a lot. After that, what they did is they switched to a new system. We're contributing or paying up to 10% of the GIA.
So this is all FEMA.
Uh, for Wyndham Regional to act as a manager of sorts. So they're telling us what project, they're verifying that it's done, they're taking photos before and after. But the closeout, AOT is now requiring that the town complete the closeout. And I've never done it before. So I only got the instructions last, two weeks ago, but before Friday, when Mark and I go over this to hopefully get the numbers, I will have the system down completely and will know what I need to answer your question.
Yeah, well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting then is what you could do is, so here's, here's one problem with this invoice, is we have material clearly broken out by, um, by location, which would enable you to say, okay.
Mark has notes he can, he can chime in if you want.
And Mark, and, and so it would be something that you would, we need to go, go work with, because the hours are not broken out by location. There's just four hours of excavator, four hours of truck, and 70 material hours of gravel.
I'll make it.
Crushed gravel.
Okay.
But yeah, there's going to be, and whether or not it's, it's, so, and it may be, it may be onerous to set up like five, the way our current network system is, it might be really a pain in the derriere to have a separate line item for every single little thing. Um, so what I would suggest is noting things, getting either making, getting the contractor to break it out. Because we were wondering that about the $17,380 one that that invoice, which we did see.
This would be very helpful. Mark, this is what's ideal, but you.
Then again, that's.
No, Mark, Mark does really, really, really detailed stuff. But how do we, how do we?
This is just a reference sheet. It's not my actual bill. But I made my bill and then I put this to clarify where things happen.
No, I, I know. I mean, I know from looking at that, that yours are really detailed and they're really easy ones to put into a spreadsheet and sort. So how do we transcribe that into Archie Clark's?
Okay, so I, I got. Well, truckloads of gravel coming from barks on August 1st.
And at 5:00.
And, and that was part of the GIA grant.
Right, but how do I figure that out on this invoice?
What did they put for?
They put, they have 70, 70 yards of crushed gravel for 1,000. We're gonna, we're gonna have to do a spreadsheet. And, and it's gonna have to, we're gonna have to have a working meeting to sort it out.
Some of this I can verify for you.
Yeah.
Because of the material.
Well, maybe you, me, and Stan, since you're the grants manager, Stan? How do you feel about it? Because I can.
I think that would be a wonderful solution.
Okay, good. Let's do a working meeting and go through all these invoices and then set up a spreadsheet, so we can sort them by grant.
Would Friday work for you?
Friday would be good, but I have an 8:15 scheduled for a meeting on BCA stuff at 8:15.
Yeah.
So anytime, late morning or later afternoon Friday.
I can do the more, I can do late morning. And then I have, there's a 2:00 PM meeting of the Energy Committee, which only lasts an hour, so I could do that after.
Yeah, you guys pick the time and I'll, I'll, with you and pay and clarify.
So pick a time and I'll write it down so that I don't lose it in my memory.
So, I don't know, 10:00, 11:00?
10:30, 10:30 is perfect.
Stan and Mark.
10:30, working, baby.
On what day? Friday?
Yeah, I think that was the day that we, they're talking.
To go over.
To sort through, to sort and allocate.
Materials.
Materials and labor.
Yeah, labor and materials. Yeah, labor and materials.
Allocate labor and materials. Because that was my question on the AP warrant. Is, I'm thinking if you come in early, before the rest of us sign off on it, we should all, we should try to look at. Maybe not, like all the appropriations, I don't need to look at everything.
Right, I came in and that, the GIA was confusing, it was GIA and FEMA, except I'm thinking, well, FEMA is a grant. But it was not a grant, an aid.
It's a grant, it ju- they, they just have it in one line item for numbering. But we can separate that out from the invoices and put it into. Um. You know, put it into a spreadsheet that breaks it out, which is how we ultimately used to do things for grants.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have us move along, are there any other questions about the accounts payable?
We don't have a problem with the numbers, I guess, it's just their allocation.
It's just.
We're gonna talk about that too in a little bit, because I have concerned at some other areas. That I found problems. All right, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrants twenty-four ten dated nine six twenty-three. In the amount. Of thirty-four thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. May I have a second?
Also.
Second, uh, any? We did that already, discussion? Discussion, you did that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good discussion on that, thank you. Last list around.
Did you help me make a copy of that?
You know what, I have a copy at home, I just left it, so I'll give it back. And you keep it, and then I'll see you on Friday, so.
I am going to, um, make a motion to approve payroll check warrant. Twenty-four zero nine dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In the amount of one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Now I have a second.
Okay.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving warrant twenty-four zero nine for one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Hearing none, the motion passes, and I'll send your draft to you soon.
This wasn't thinking in terms of.
Okay, as I was going around getting signed, um, Mark. I have your completed projects, planned projects, and what are you doing, what plans are you making to be determined? Do you want to share that with us?
When now that the GIA is complete, I'm making a plan, I'm pretty upset. As we just talked about with Stan and Nora. Who finish up the case to work on the man. Clarifying, everybody bills, we have that go along.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This paperwork includes your term sheet.
Yeah, that's all.
Is it all done?
Yeah.
I know, I'm like a bad mom.
When the, the flood came, it pushed me back.
I know, I know, I'm just.
But I'm all caught up, I brought it in to, um, Judy.
Because it's critical for the.
Yeah, and I also made a, a sheet for FEMA reference for forty twenty-one flood. And twenty twenty-three flood.
Thank you, thank you.
So hopefully.
Appreciate Melissa's question, I appreciate her answer.
Most of that shit was clarified. Um, so, I, I did, and I don't know Stan, if you received, I, I got a email. And I, I just, I didn't think to send it to you, you know, if you got it. The grants and aid projects has, has been, uh. Extended for another year. So if we didn't get it done, we do have another year of. Uh, because we completed it, I think we're on, we're one of the few towns that are, that are scheduled, or on schedule.
Our budget is very tight, and, uh, Melissa emailed me that we, over the weekend, when she came in, got. The grant, uh, highway funds of ten thousand four hundred and something dollars that gives us a little more cushion for liquidity. And I think when, if we can get this done, this one that we've done. After, forgetting about the extension of a year.
Yeah.
We, we hopefully will get roughly another ten thousand dollars, whatever the, the costs are, up to twelve fifty. And we got it, the last one we submitted in two weeks. So if that works out well, we'll have that by the end of September.
Yeah, well, that's, that sounds good.
But thank you, I did get a copy of that.
Okay, that's good. So then, uh, I've been trying to. We got the mower came to town, it came to town unexpected, I was waiting for the call, uh.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understood, all the FEMA twenty twenty-one work is complete?
Um.
And complete.
Everything that I built for twenty twenty-one is explained, it's, I don't know if we're complete, because. Some of the things were listed in the portal as ninety percent, seventy percent, and so. Our, we, FEMA guy, but, yeah, that right, is gonna go through and try to determine whether. There's actually more to be done or if we're done.
Or if we're done.
Well, the old, he, he, the new FEMA guy for the forty-seven twenty is only dealing with forty-seven twenty. He referred us back to Patrick, if I recall correctly. At the meeting we had on the twenty-ninth of August. Uh, so, uh, my goal, just so people are aware of it, is hopefully by the end of the day Monday. Have a full report, having gone through the forty-six twenty-one FEMA project, listing every site, every project. Number, the associated dollar amount, and a quick summary of what I found in the site portal. Of their view of what we are, and then I'd like to sit down with whoever wants to participate sometime next week, maybe, the work beat. And just isolate those things that we're indifference with.
Sure.
To focus on getting answers to and or finishing, so that. The goal, I guess, is our goal has been the end of September to have all that done, so we can do that, and hopefully. Targeting next week as unexpected, if it doesn't interfere with anybody else's schedule, that's, that's what I have on my plate right there.
So, um, why don't you shoot a, uh, suggested time date for, um. Forty-six twenty-one review. Portal review. We'll call it the portal review, because you're doing.
I'm doing the bill.
Billing review, which next week we have. You have Friday, you're gonna work on it ten thirty.
But I will be next week for the billing, but I've been steadily, I started on it already, we're just pulling. Finding out where the bills were. But I will, I've started on that, I will not be done with it next year.
Okay.
I will be done with it the following week when the company goes home.
Okay, and I think we had briefly talked about that, we need to put those two together, so I have to make sure we're.
Right, so I'm just gonna try and cull the data.
Okay.
And then compare it to what you have, and we'll see if we can make the pieces match.
If I can be of any help along the way to next week or the week after, let me know.
No, you will be, we, we will be heated for sure.
I think my only thing next week for i- is that border, uh, view of, of border debate. Civil authority, two thirty on Tuesday.
Yeah, we're gonna go to that, I promised it would be brief.
All right, so, um, do you want to read after that?
But we can't, I don't mean to put pressure on anybody, I'm just saying that's what I plan to be done, and what, what everybody else does is. What your personal life allows, you know, I, I don't. I don't wanna, I know what it's like when an arbitrary decision comes out and, and you don't have the time. I don't want to stress anyone.
You've started done like this.
That's, that's all I've done, is for me.
Which is great, so, let's give a little.
Talk about it.
Talk about, yeah, we'll, we'll do three now, we'll schedule it in. Work, because Hollen Hill is not done yet, correct, Mark?
Yes, that's, it's, that's correct.
Right, and that's a part of the whole.
It will be done before, I plan for next week.
Finish it up, yeah, if we're not calling in, we'll get someone then to say, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and the mowing, so I wanted to get mowing done this week, so many.
Right.
And, uh, so, yeah, things kind of got rescheduled. But I'm, Dylan Michael, I'll have the, uh. The final FEMA twenty twenty-one. Players will be done with the exception of paving, which I received an email from Stan that. Basins will be coming in on the first.
Early October, he said early October, I think he said the first week. I'll have to go review my notes, but he apologized, by the way, for the delay.
I'm sure they got busy.
They got snowmall. Oh, fantastic, good, 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 thank you, Dot.
So, uh, so as far as I know for twenty twenty-one flood, our obligations were culvert number nine. With those two concrete headwalls, uh, finish that site. Finish the stone line ditching on Putney Mountain, which is now complete, and then the culverts on Holland Hill. So, I feel like if we get culverts on Holland Hill, that will complete us for. Everything in basketball, we got the, the gravel ground on Bennett Road. So I think that's gonna, but it's pretty close to what we would all wish it for. I'm gonna come up with some details that we have not. Finished that we were on.
Okay.
Do they come out and re-review it?
They can, or we can get Alyssa Sabata to come from, or we can have, we can have someone else come and review it.
Megan Brunk, I think.
Oh, Megan Brunk, I'm sorry, Megan Brunk, Megan Brunk.
Reggie, whatever her last name is.
Megan was at her FEMA meeting.
Yeah, she is.
Do a whole bunch of, uh. Hydraulic studies for some of the sites we've worked at, that we have a question about future work, who's gonna get them? The I- studies in mind for us, we can have them in our folder once they're done, they're. They're good for her, I believe, and, uh, so anytime we apply for another grant, there's, uh, a word sent. That rises on those, it could be, have a footprint or, or sustain for everyone.
It was good of you and Dot to ask her to do those, because I was sitting here saying, oh my God, she's gonna do three, four, that's amazing.
At the meeting, she spoke up the first time and said, would you like that I could all study that, and I'm like, yeah, that would be great. And then as we were reviewing other sites, uh, we added those and start.
I'm not sure if you reported them or not, but at some point, probably we should make a list and, and send it to her, so I have a powder. These are the seven hydraulic studies we'd like to be completed.
We should probably.
Yeah, I'd be curious, I'd be curious to know what they are. I'd be curious to know what they are, because we're, you know, we see something, and we guys see some things, and I'm just. Want to come here, just see what we all think needs to be done, that's all.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, uh, I feel like, once we get the Holland Hill, we'll be on top of FEMA. Be able to get some funding, I do that, and. The mowing, it's late this evening, but Saturday night, never, I guess, the mower is working super. It showed up unexpectedly, I, I made a phone call and wanted to make sure that they do my phone number. To call, so I can unload it, and I was coming home one afternoon, and there it is sitting behind the gate. And, uh, they must have had somewhere unloaded in this, or packaging. So I brought it in the shop and, uh, put a few hoses, the different sizes, and I wasn't clear. Uh, without hooking it up, so I called the ACB guy, and they sent him over, he brought fittings. And then he had to go into the computer and program for this mower, so many gallons of oil, and. Give it the proper RPMs.
The computer on the tractor, on the four-bill excavator?
Yeah.
Oh my God.
Really, it's quite like that.
Complex.
There's like four buttons on each joystick, and for different options, auxiliary, and. So they've set me up with one button, once is on, second time is off. So it really is.
If the battery gets disconnected, does the computer lose that memory, or, and you have to go back in and program it?
No, I think it has a backup.
It does.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it, it takes a few minutes, there's so many safety issues, security things that. If you get out for one second, get back in, you have to push like three buttons to make it off the rate, you can't just store it back.
Oh wow.
You have to hit hydraulic button, and you have to start brakes and engage.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it takes a few minutes, some, some days it's frustrating, but it comes to you after a day.
I won't complain about my cell phone again.
So that, that, I guess, comes up to everything that I. Uh, people, I, I did, uh, receive the phone call and then, uh, I tried to state the dot's number.
Yeah, and I'll bring that up while you're on. All right, Mark, well, thank you, and thanks to people you've been seeing in meetings and everything else, I appreciate your. All right, next is, uh, Paul, do you want to talk about nine-one-one concerns?
Yeah, well, sorry. There's a new property at three eighteen Hill Road, that's the new address.
What is the number?
Three eighteen Hill Road. Before that, it was three sixteen Hill Road, there were two properties, another property built there. Um, I, I guess it was sold.
Yeah, she partitioned her lot and sold it, so her son, Gene Alby's son built a house. And to get proper title and everything.
Address to get a, get the title, so, yeah, so that's added. Um, along with that, I. Dealing a little bit with the Putney Mountain Association about the kiosk that was formerly. Eight seventy dress of Brook Road, and is now seven Windmill Hill Trail. Sent them, uh, I, I sent an email, you know, based on their website. Never heard anything, never got anything. Uh, so I sent a letter, um, town. Heading station area. And I haven't heard anything again, so. I don't know what's happening.
They have a new address.
And, and as far as I know, you know, I was asking them to change the address on their website, because they have, you know, maps.
Sure.
And as far as I know, they haven't done it, so I, I don't know what else to do as far as like those, because I don't know how to get in touch with them.
I, I'm gonna take a look, I might have an old, I might have a phone number, because then they were adding land to their trail association. They communicated through email with me, and I probably have something, it's the.
And I'll, I'll start to add to that, Jeff Nugent will be big on anything like that, because he. He maps all of the trails, he's, he knows all, everything about everything.
Do you have a contact for him?
Uh, yeah, Jeff Nugent at Wyndham Regional Commission, Rad Row, um. I'm gonna have to.
But we could look him up on the website.
Yes, it would be on the website, and he's a great person, he talks to scary and all of the girls.
So the website of the Wyndham Regional, that's it?
Yeah, that's right, or you'll get, uh, Jeff Nugent's extension, they have their own extension right on there. Yeah, he would know on this, uh, nine-one-one numbers, trail numbers, trail mapping, and anything.
Okay, well, no, I'll contact him.
Yeah, did, I, my wife and I recently hiked off of that Windmill Hill Trail. And I noticed in the map, it was very clear to delineate that the lower portion of the trail system is the Putney Mountain Association. And the, and the north of the Nappens, and the north part of Brookline, I think, it becomes the Windmill Hill Association or something else.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you, did you mail it to, or contact Putney Mountain Association or Windmill?
No, I haven't, because on that kiosk, it's. No, I haven't, because on that kiosk, it's it's the
It named something.
Putney Mountain Association.
Yeah, so Putney Mountain Association is the one you sent it to.
That's who I sent it to.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Sounds very.
Yeah, because I know, and the one further north, it is different.
Okay, so it's the Putney Mountain Association.
Yeah, and the other thing is, um, the people in Montpelier have expressed upset that at eight sixty eight, that it should be changed to four Windmill Hill Trail. And I've talked to the people there. They don't wanna do that. They don't want their address changed. And they maintain that there is a driveway, shared driveway with, I don't know if you're familiar with this this Norman Solomon's old place, uh, there's a, there's a driveway there that they're saying they share. So, you know, that's, I I don't know whose property that driveway goes on to. Uh, the guy in Montpelier seemed to think that it was not the owner of.
Yeah, originally, it was a town road.
Really?
Town trail.
You're talking about?
No, that's Windmill Hill Trail.
I'm talking about, this is off of Braxton Brook Road before you get to Windmill Hill.
Oh, before.
Yeah, there's, there is like a man.
Yeah.
There's another entrance.
I believe that was just Norm Solomon's access to the corner of the field.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's unclear to me who owns that.
Okay.
And I mean, talking to the owners, they said it was shared, and that if nine one one came in, that that would be the, so I, I mean, it's.
Have you actually looked at the deed to that property?
No, I haven't looked at the deed.
That would be the next step. I'd be happy to help you on that, if you'd like.
Okay, because, I mean, when I talked to the woman there, she said that Norm had given them some piece of paper that told them where their rights were.
He had worked out in the range at Wicklow Town, and I remember Michael McDonald, McDonald, Mike. It lives up on.
O'Donnell.
O'Donnell, Michael O'Donnell, I, and someone else, after we had the trail cut and graded, and the berms put in, the direct off the waters in a heavy rainstorm. We walked that, and my my remembrance was that the early part of that trail is shared to the gate.
No, I'm not talking about the trail. I'm talking about.
Streetside.
There's another driveway you're talking about.
Yes.
I I don't even know if I would call it a driveway. It's like, it's moved. And it kind of goes to their house. I mean.
Uh-huh.
You could go either way.
So it doesn't, it doesn't come off of Windmill Hill Trail, comes in somewhere else?
Off of Braxton Brook Road, yeah.
Okay.
And that's.
No, there should be something in the deed. Whatever they got, it gotta be in the deed. And if there's a separate paper of an easement or or a right of way, whatever, that should have also been recorded.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you what she told me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just giving you direction or assistance and trying to.
So, I mean, if we could look at that.
Reaffirm that.
Because the guy in Montpelier seemed to think that that was not on their property. And therefore, therefore, they should have a Windmill Hill Trail address. That that's where it's at, with that. I mean, he was kind of, he was kind of irritated.
Well, I'm not an know-it-all, but I know that when they take those properties over, eh eh eh, their rights are appraised, and in order for the appraisal to happen, the conditions of that need to uh, be affirmed and understood by all parties. So my suspicion is that agency has somewhere in their records uh, a survey and or an appraisal in that would be in the description of any of the rights that were they had acquired in the process of handling, and so all of that should be available.
How would we access that?
Ask them for it. We probably have most of it on file already.
Okay.
All right, I recall when the trail company wanted to access to the town road, um, Norm didn't really want the access on the old town road, because it was turning into the driveway of his new house, and so he wanted to leave the old town road and have people park in his field and access the trail on that side separately. So that's where the confusion comes in. Norm tried to establish parking in a trailhead in the corner of his field and not have parking internet access. Right, so also, I really remember, it it it's probably in the minutes, because you know, if you clean here, you're being maybe the city. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, he wrote letters to the board at the time and said.
Yeah, that was before my time. I'm not recalling any of it.
So without holding up the rest of the meeting, I think there are solutions to the questions.
Yeah, so that ends my report.
All right, well, thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate taking over that. All right, Mr. Nova, Highway Grants and Aid, and other.
Yeah, yeah, well, the Grants and Aid project that Mark in the last meeting said was ninety or ninety-nine percent done is now a hundred percent done. Lisa Donley from Wyndham Regional went out and inspected it, confirmed it. She sent, just in the last two days, uh, photos of the completed item. She's satisfied with it. And it's just a confirmation that the town is now responsible for closing that out and getting our money and submitting our match and and building that all, that package into one unit and and finalizing it. So, as you already heard earlier, that we intend on doing that if we can this week. Uh, for whatever reason, there's something that we need to ascertain with the treasurer's office for final numbers. That would be a delay, whatever that amounts to. Uh, but I would think that would not be that long. So I I would think within three weeks, hopefully, we would have a check for the closeout of this. That's our intent, to get it done right. And that's the only grant and aid project that we currently have active. We've got one for twenty twenty four. Uh, but that doesn't need to begin its process until next year. Uh, uh, Dot, myself, Leanne, and Carrie Born met here on the twenty eighth. Uh, I believe it was, it was last Friday, so it might have been the first of September. And, excuse me, don't breathe in while you're talking. Um, and so the contract, for whatever reason, seemed to take forever, was in fact executed. Uh, there was, uh, there were dollar amounts added to provide a cushion for Carrie to be feel comfortable uh, with signing it. I mean, I think the vapor barrier dollar amount was three hundred dollars, the total of the, um, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the total of his increased insurance premiums and other materials and the labor increases was three thousand dollars. So the original contract twenty eight nine was increased by thirty-three hundred dollars. Dot has a copy of the executed work change order that was included and signed by all parties in the contract. Uh, so you you'll have access to it. And in the course of that discussion, Carrie indicated that he was gonna start that this fall and to to do the work. So we'll get this year's prices and not price increases of next year, which will work out, I think, well for all concerned.
If I may add, the additional monies will not be coming from FEMA, I mean, from ARPA um, or this town treasury. It will be coming from the Brookline Meeting House. So the additional three thousand, three hundred dollars uh, is coming from the Meeting House funds. And that he has requested for a ten thousand dollar advance, at which he will invoice the town before he begins work, so that he can buy his materials and such. So that's the only difference is that that we have.
And we agreed to all of those. It is in writing, and it is on the work change order, and.
Right.
Working order. So we're.
That one's done.
So that's done.
So that's, that's done. I mean, other than the work itself, the contract, it was a little bit of a barrier, for whatever reason, is now done. Everyone was very cordial. It was good to have executed and completed. Uh, progress has happened.
It appears okay, was okay with everything from one hundred.
Yes. As far as work concerned, we're, we're, we're good to go.
Yeah, yeah, she she apparently took a different posture at the tail end of of this event. She initially said that she wanted, if there were changes to be made, she wanted to go back to them. But then, when actually uh, there had been an exchange between Leanne and Caitlin, uh, she then sent something out indicating that uh, it didn't need to be resubmitted if there were changes, because when you stop and think about it, the original agreement that was sent out, well, actually, there was a two-phase to that. There was a management agreement and a regular agreement from that particular historic entity, and it it actually provides for work change orders and or amendments to the original project. So the idea of then going back and having them to reapprove, it doesn't line up with the rest of the program. So somehow that sunk in, and and so we're on, we're on a good path right now. I didn't need to go back to state step one. Uh, yesterday, uh, Samara and I had a Zoom meeting with Maggie Foley from Guilford, who is hired by Wyndham Regional to help implement and go over this MTAP program. Uh, we did have a discussion about it. Um, uh, there are interesting, different flavors that came out of that discussion. Uh, it was a little confusing to me at one point, because they kept saying that we were to execute a scope work. And then when they, Kate Buckley, Katie Buckley of BLCT, Chris, Maggie uh, sent stuff to Samara and I, there was this SOW, the scope of work that was supposed to be executed. Well, when I actually opened it up yesterday morning early before the meeting with her, uh, I noticed that it was, in fact, an agreement. Uh, there was some crazyology in it that that I, from our experience with the shed up here, with the town garage shed, felt maybe needed some attention. They said they were reserving sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, didn't know what that meant. Was it reserving from us? Was it reserving it from an entity that was giving the grant? She she didn't particularly like the question, but the fact of the matter is, I wanted to clear in any agreement that we were then to enter into, and and it would be open to discussion tonight, whether we want to enter into that or put it off or whatever.
I I don't think she expressed an editorial opinion about asking the question. She understood there was confusion about it. And she understood the past history of some of them.
I'm not saying she didn't.
Yeah, but I I don't think she either liked or disliked it. I wouldn't have colored it that way.
Okay, okay, although she said that she spent more time than she should have. Uh, obviously, there's a difference of opinion, and that's irrelevant to the progress of this whole thing.
Should I put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, she was hoping that we would talk about it tonight.
All right.
Uh, and it's not on the agenda for a vote, so I guess that's all that can happen. If there's other members of the committee feel that they'd like to go over a little bit in detail, we can. Otherwise, I sent to you late this afternoon a copy of the agreement and so-called scope of work. Uh, you'll notice that basically the scope of work is pretty much all it's offered. It's very general, very open. Um, and so, any, the only other thing I asked for was, on that agreement, number H, under the first multiple listing of items, uh, after having been surprised with the shed that we needed to pay thirty-six thousand dollars at some point in time for backing out of them. And the reason when we were told that we owed that money, it wasn't that it was a penalty. It was the explanation that there were other agencies within the state who had put work into that that were behind the scenes, that nobody knew about, that needed that kind of money for remuneration for their services. And I'm looking at this saying, well, we're dealing with somewhere up north in the state item. We're dealing with Wyndham Regional, who was the management locally of the sand and salt shed, that maybe I ought to ask her to clarify whether or not there are any other kinds of expenses that would be incurred should, down the line, the town of Brookline decide to back out of the scenario. And she didn't have a problem with it. She, in terms of, she's gonna go back to Mr. Company and Wyndham Regional, ask them about that, and see if those concerns about those two topics, the sixty-five hundred reference as reserved can be identified, and if we can clarify the fact that there, there would not be any kind of fees to any agencies in the background for this particular project. I expressed a little bit of concern that I thought that the scope of work was very, very vague. Uh, I think she indicated that she, it's intentionally left vague to be as inclusive as it could be for various, uh, law grants, projects, et cetera, et cetera.
So I I had a slightly get the take on it.
By all means.
Go ahead.
Did you say that it wasn't up for vote today, because it wasn't on the agenda in those like discussions?
We could vote whether or not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I I didn't look at this thoroughly. So if we needed to vote on it, if you wanted to vote on it, we could. Thank you, Paul.
I I have, I have, uh, some things I agree with Stan. I thought his point about putting in a, something that would essentially hold us harmless.
That's why I said, do we want to put it on the next meeting? Because if you want to amend this.
Well, no, we don't have to sign this. I think what we might want to decide is whether we want to go forward to just say yes or no. Work on the agreement the next meeting and amend it to fit our purposes as well as theirs. Because my sense was, the reason why they're looking for a formal agreement is there are other towns who would like to get on this ride. And if we don't want to get on the ride and make the commitment, then somebody else will step up and take our place. It basically said that when Katie Buckley's email.
I I understood it to be that there were six towns in this, in Wyndham County.
There are six towns, but if, if, but if you read the Katie Buckley email, what I got out of it is if one of those six towns says, eh, we're not gonna do this.
I missed that.
Yes, they'll ask, they'll invite someone else to do it.
I missed that, okay.
So I think that's why they have a sense of urgency. Certainly, Maggie wants to get started. And what I got out of it is essentially, Governor Scott has has allocated funds for small towns that don't have enough resources to go out and get consultants to help them. And this, this grant actually pays for consultants to do two things. Help the town sort of do outreach and figure out what our needs assessment are, like, what are our pie in the sky dreams? Do you want two trucks instead of one truck?
Oh.
You know, first, I'm I'm throwing that out there, because we're talking about trucks. Do we want, I don't know, I was saying to Paul, a swimming pool in the town, but Paul says, no, liability issues, no. So, but I'm I'm being a little glib here, but the point is, is that we basically, the scope of work will basically be figuring out what our project list is. And then the next portion of that is figuring out, is gathering a consultant to help us do grant applications, assess where the money opportunities are, and her rate, she said, is fifty dollars an hour. So frankly, when I added, when I said they, you know, was, going back to that sixty-five hundred dollars that's reserved, when I divided that by fifty, that comes out to a hundred and thirty hours. And she has three towns that she told us she figures she has to split a hundred and fifty hours. So I think that would be a first question, if how much of that sixty-five hundred dollars they've reserved to pay for this is is ours. You know, how many hours do we really get? Probably only fifty hours, which is less than sixty-five hundred. But fifty hours is fifty hours to help with organizing brainstorming sessions and outreach. And the timeline, I asked if it piggybacked in with our town planning work.
That's what I'm thinking.
And, yeah, and I'm thinking that those, not that we don't have a pretty hardworking select board, but I think we need to get some new bodies on board who can take up some of this, this process.
And so volunteers coming up, I'll talk to you about shortly.
Good, good. And I think, yeah. Um, I think that this is a good piggyback thing that could happen quicker than, the town plan will be a much longer process, was the first thing she said. Which I get. But this would be an initiative, an initiative, you could kind of dovetail that.
She she asked for various committees, any committee that has any influence in town in terms of disiring something should be a part of the decision.
Yeah, I mean.
What we're really saying, we're not differing, I think. We're complementing each other.
We do. We have slightly, yeah, we had.
I don't know what the differences are, but we can talk about after, if you'd like.
It doesn't matter, for different.
That's what I think.
Yeah, no, no.
So I mean, not even mentioning.
Agree. I'm, I kind of feel like, for me personally, if we have enough interested people in town, I think we should make a tentative, I I, and if we can amend this such that there's no loss or foul to the town, if, you know.
Can you come up with a motion right now, so that?
Yeah, I would move that we approve going forward with signing a formal, some sort of formal understanding. Yeah, I would move that we approve going forward with signing a formal, some sort of formal understanding with, I would call it more like a memorandum of understanding with some, some formal agreement with WRC that we want to participate in the program. I would move, I move that we, we vote to address amending the agreement possibly in between and at our next meeting. And then we can, I don't know what the procedure would be, but I would move that we go forward with participating in the program and adopting some, some level of formal agreement to get Maggie started to come out and work with us. Because as soon as we do that, she'll come up, she can start by talking to the board where.
That's a long motion.
Sorry. I just moved that we go forward and.
With the understanding we're not locked in. I mean, it's an agreement, but we can back out at any time, as we understand. And, and if we don't start, we won't know what opportunities there are.
So we have exactly.
Perfectly good sense. Motion on the floor to join with the municipal MTAP program, the Wyndham Regional, and evaluate the benefits to the town in the next few meetings.
By sign, by signing some amended form of.
She's probably not going to proceed if we don't. They're going to require what we need in.
All right, so they want a commitment.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any other discussion? Do I have to send a letter or will somebody else here?
Well, it should probably be near Stan.
She wants to know if we're proceeding and the fact that we have made a motion, it's been seconded, it's been, I guess we, we all said yes, we, we want to or not. But in any event, she wants, she wants to know. Okay, so, so you could say that we'll be in our next set of minutes?
In our minutes, we've made him, we, I would say that we made a motion and we.
We're ready to vote.
And we're going to vote and we should vote tonight if we can.
We're going to be ready to.
Yeah. And then one of us can report back, yes, we voted, yes, we want to move forward. Yes, we're going to work on amending the agreement. We won't be able to approve and look at it and send it back to you until the next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to join the MTAP program and, and we have a second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor to join it signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Motion passes. It will be in our minutes. You can tell. It's there. And should I put it on the agenda for discussing at the next meeting? Probably for, yeah, clarifying where we are. It sounds like she's looking for a, a significant amount of input from the town. And, and. See how much work it is. I had a little bit of differing opinion about that. If I were from Africa, and in Africa, it was the process of all people along Main Street, they go out and sweep the street. And they come to America and find out a year after they've been here that there's a street sweeper that goes through three times a year. If I didn't, somebody didn't tell me that, I'd only see a street, street sweeper happened. So I had asked her, if you have a list of things with other towns, bigger, smaller, do that we don't have because we're so small.
Oh, boy.
That, that maybe, maybe it would be a direction that we could then focus on in other areas to save us time, rather than discussing what we don't have, what we do have. She didn't particularly care for that. What she thought was it was divert, diverting attention to areas and seeking information that might take longer than.
I think, I think what she was saying was, what she said is she thinks, she spoke as someone who applies, does a lot of grant applications where she doesn't like to see the tail waving the dog, I think that. So don't look for the grants and what other people are doing. Figure out what you want and then look for the grant that matches it.
I understand that philosophy. I just disagree with it in fifty percent because there, I think that we ought to get both. Save us time. If we can, and she doesn't think we have it.
She did, she did.
Relevant to discuss.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's. Any other contracts?
Uh, let's see. Here's the Bateson Brother contract and if you have some, I can. He promised to send that in. I haven't obviously written it, but I'll look it over and make sure it's A-OK. And send the copy to the treasurer. I've got to send the treasurer and assistant treasurer the copy of Mr. Kerry Born's contract at the meeting house. And with that, I think anything that I'm involved with in terms of contracts, grants, is done. Well, as I said earlier, he's. First week or second week, early October, October, essentially.
Be nice to see that.
Yeah, but. Okay, Bruce, building commissioner?
I'll skip to the meeting house right off. I do have, I had, I looked at RFP for people sitting on the table. I only made one change today, and that was the addition of power washing, the building with bleach or TSP and a combination of such.
And the doors?
True. And that could be up for discussion with the contractor a little bit. But if it turns out that the guy that does it has the one that worked for Mombenay, that's what they do. So they're, they're, they're familiar with that process. And if anybody wants to see what it looks like, when it's done, just take a look at a school. Because they did a smoking job on that building. And I'm hoping that that will happen with the speaker as well.
So you'll email the RFP and it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, and you have to put in the RFP when there's going to be a vendor site visit.
I'll remember what you had in the old one.
No, we've changed, we've changed our protocol. We changed it so that there's a site visit for an event, interested vendors to show up and to look at stuff. And all, and all the questions are sort of asked at the same time.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll type that up, like send it to you.
Yeah, I can help edit it.
If I screw it up.
Okay. All right, very good.
Okay.
And that's for spring, that's for spring, summer of twenty twenty-four.
Would you want that RFP for the next time?
I, I'd like it before the next meeting so that I can fix it and then get it approved for putting in the paper.
Okay, take care. You all got, I think you all got the stuff I sent through. The two, the two issues, the one issue where, where I was having a problem with banging on the water pipes and line wall was great and swayed me right towards the side of the UV, the UV tube, the sensor, and we had a sensor on the old one. Looked pretty new, put it on the new one, worked fine. And thank God I didn't have to replace it. It's four hundred and fifty dollars. Smile. So I was able to eliminate that issue, eliminate a service fault with about a ten minute screw out, screw in. And I'm getting a little bit of chatter in the piping, but I don't think, a little bit of leakage in a room spot. I don't think there's anything to be disturbed about. I've checked. I'd say this is the first day that I haven't worked at the building in about six days. And they're quiet, everything's fine at this point. Secondly, I also told line well, line well should have dropped it off. Since I was talking to them, I told them we drop off an additional box of, of, of water filters for, for Mark to change. We need, and we'll have plenty for quite some time at this time. So we don't have to worry about that anymore. What was my other issue? Sensor, we're missing something. I don't think, I guess that's about it unless I think about it later. But that's it. You know, I mean, the building is basically done. We just, oh, yes. You realize that we shut down the air handlers about two, three weeks ago. I don't know if he's cut a bill from quarter to quarter last time. I think we did.
Three hundred and seventy-eight dollars or three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Sean was great. I've really got to know these people very well. So we don't have to worry about that anymore.
Does Judy know what account that comes out of? Because she has sent an email. About that in a few minutes. It's on the agenda.
So. Going forward, I am really pissy about these water jets. And Doc can help me. I think you have the legalities of, of where I can look into that as to what are our limits, what, what we need to do. I don't believe they're living up to the amount of people that are in that building that we need to spend that kind of money first. Second, we're don't, we're annotated as a, as a school building and have been since minute one. I have a feeling the state just got us as a school building and they've had these tests all the time for, for the building. So what I decided to do is call Olivia, like I do with the air handlers. What do you have in your, what do you have in your buildings? What do you have in your other daycares? Eh, they don't have anything. So I asked them, do you have your water tested? How many people are in your, how many kids are in your, in your building? So I'm going to do that. I'll call Olivia and see if I can get an answer to it. We're going to have a book, seven hundred and some odd dollars in the next AP more next, next time.
I think every couple of years we were told that they do a comprehensive series of tests.
They do, but.
It was six hundred last night.
I'm over the opinion at this point, since we've spent three thousand dollars with the water system, software system. Since we've activated this UV system, which was initially put in by Brookline Elementary School and never used, and Tina Bill's like, put that in the note, didn't use it from two thousand and twelve till time. We had a bad water test. And I think you were involved in that, if I remember right. And that's when Scott called that hook, get up. We haven't had a failed water test in six years. And you don't involve in this. If this is getting to be redundant, redundant and ridiculous, I'd like to make sure that we follow, find a way to stop it because it's getting expensive. And I, I don't see the point of it, especially in light that we have the UV system, which is working very well, and the water system. Mark, when he changed the water filters, when we thought it had an issue, one's going back in, Mark. It looked good. The first one looked a little mean yet.
Yeah, the one that takes the bulk of it.
Yeah. And we, we figured it had to be at least six months or more. So I guess what I'm saying is we've got the water system under control at this point. We have had a failed water test, but what is clean, and I want to see what the other daycares do. And then proceed from there to see if we can put an end or minimize all these expensive water tests that I believe we're getting.
Nancy.
Oh, well, after I get my research.
And she's the one that is sending those tests out.
I know. I saw, I'll do that at the end. Okay, now that's that. I'll move on off. As you can see in there, it said about me resigning for the energy committee, me resigning as a chair. That's not really accurate. I'm resigning from the committee. And just to give you a very quick reason, for two years I've been trying to do, to catch up on my personal life, and I failed at it. And it's come time that I have to grapple down, like I tell Patty when she's playing cards in the morning, and get things done. And I have a lot to do. It's vast, some is personal, some that's inside the house, some that's outside the house, some that's health, it goes on and on and on. And so until the which time I am, I get control of my situation, which I do not have, but I will. I have to back off and not be on that and back off on a lot of additional meetings. Because I'm the sole operator of this function. I have no help.
Who is on the committee, if you don't mind me asking? Bruce, Samara, John, Balloon.
Yeah, and Dan. There's three of us.
I would suggest that the three of them decide who the chair will be, Doc, not.
Yeah, how, what if John or Daniel want to be the chair? I would, I would temporarily chair until, I don't think it's the select board's job to appoint the chair.
I'm a little alarmed at that.
To advise the committee, correct?
Yep.
And so the committee can.
She's around.
The, the committee would decide and, and, and then.
And then let me select what we go to, to make those appointments.
I just want to make one more of a point.
Well, you could, I mean.
The reason why I wanted to chair in the first place is because my two years of experience is doing more than research and center on, on the buildings and, and, and energy and solar side, solar companies and sectors. I'll still contribute that as I can, but I just, I gotta step away.
I had you say the meeting house committee.
It's too much.
It's a lot.
My, my, my life needs to be organizing. It's not right now. So that's that.
And our next meeting is this Friday.
Yeah, that's for the. What is the meeting? Friday?
Friday at two.
That's for the MRF update, isn't it?
Yeah. But the MRF, you want to do the MRF update?
What's that?
The MRF update is that we filed our application to get, to request separate of three buildings. The meeting house, our town office and the.
So I selected Samara as being the secretary of chair and then.
I can be a temporary chair. If you're okay with that.
So the, the update is the application is filed. Accept with regret your resignation from the committee. The next meeting will be on the two PM on Friday at town hall with Samara, John and Daniel. And they will request that they can discuss and the appointment of a new chair.
Did I?
On Friday.
Remember that somebody else is interested in joining the committee?
Yeah, Daniel's friend Noah, or some, I don't know if he's a friend, but he has not made a commitment.
Okay.
So in, which is a good segue into the planning commission. And appointment of committee members, because that discussion came up. Because I guess I was confused why we had to have a meeting to, to approve Oliver Ames. Charles, Charlie, who's been on the planning commission for a long time, said he is, his understanding was if someone's interested in joining a committee, they send a written request to the select board who can then appoint them. The committee doesn't have a choice. It's not the committee's job to choose who's on the committee. They can organize themselves however they want. So we didn't hear, but I, I was wondering, you know, because we could have appointed, since Oliver Ames expressed, did he send a written expression to you that he wanted to be on?
I know it myself. He has indicated that and, but I have under the new business, which is going to come after unfinished business. And we can put him down and get those appointments.
Okay, go ahead today. Because so we, we had our meeting on Saturday morning at nine AM. I sent out draft minutes to the committee members and.
Who showed up?
And should I be ceasing? Do you guys want to be CC'd on draft minutes or do you look at?
I would want to.
Okay.
I don't know if it's.
I missed that Stan's, Stan had asked to be considered to be, be added to the committee, so he should be. I missed that in an email I got. And our next meeting date is September thirtieth. Also at eight thirty AM on Saturday morning. Charlie Ezekiel, who's pretty critical, he's, he's a legacy member. His three, he has three kids and he can't, yeah, we don't have legacy admissions. We just have legacy.
Legacy member.
And he's, he's been on for several years and he.
Thank you for legacy select board member.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
He, um, he can only be there in the mornings and it works for all the rest of us. There were two more people who might be interested. Both Michael Masters and Melissa and hence Lee Masters, but they were out of town camping. So we're working and Barbara Bourne had sent, dropped off on my front porch, all the old documents. So we're going to start going through what was done in the past and trying to cull through and build from it. One question that came up is where is the electronic copies of this? Because there should be, I'm going to talk to Guy tomorrow about what computer there might be electronic copies of all the original documents on. If anybody knows, that would be.
I probably have copy electronic.
Not, if not a.
Plan.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want the PDF. We were hoping to get the Word docs so that it would save a lot of time retyping. But I explained to Barb, anything that we can put, that's a PDF or we can put into PDF can be converted to Word.
Yeah.
So.
Does that affect what I said?
Nothing. It doesn't. It doesn't.
I, I may have it in Word docs.
If you have it in Word doc, that would be, if you did.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, whatever I have that isn't Word docs, it can be readily easily.
Right, exactly. So, yeah. I figured out how to do that too. So that was my breakthrough moment.
So if it's a, so do you, if I have it, you want it or not?
Yes, please. That would be great. Yes, please.
All right, so well, I see that there's a meeting.
That's it.
There was a meeting on last Saturday at nine AM. The next meeting is September thirtieth at eight thirty AM. And it's Barbara, Charlie, Samara, Oliver, and possibly the Masters are in.
And Stan and Stan.
All right, well, we put those, I put that down here for the appointments on the new business, which we didn't get to yet, but. All right, very good. Anything else? This planning committee?
No, the planning commission, that was, it was nice. We, we got to meet Oliver, we heard some of his concerns. And I'm sure he'll, he's coming to the hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
Meeting, which I can't do. And he's. Meeting, which I can't do, and he's, so that you'll probably hear similar things from him. Oh, and we're going to call Chris Daly and see if she's interested. Because I can do Zoom, so people who aren't here all the time can zoom in.
Fabulous.
Yes. All right, we're going to move on, anything else?
If not, I'll go through mine pretty quickly, we already talked about the theme of disasters, forty-six twenty-one, we just have a little bit more to figure out. And, um, Hollins Hill and separate, make sure that we have all of our vouchers for the 2021 and the 2023 different disasters. I already explained to you that we had the meeting last Tuesday and what we did. Tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 PM, uh, there is a hazard mitigation meeting with. Uh, Marg O'Gia and which, which is from Wyndham Regional. Uh, Oliver Ames has said that he would uh like to, like to participate, I think the planning committee is part of the hazard mitigation is just sort of. All, all fits in together and it's possible that, um, you know, if we, with the MTA P program, maybe they can be helpful here and there as well. Because that, that's, that's all part of collecting information and just helping keeping us organized because we don't have the, the manpower normally. Um, next item, uh, green up cleanup day, which was moved to September 9th. I was a little concerned because I hadn't been notified, Guy didn't tell me, but I saw that the orange bags did arrive. We do have extra green bags, it's sort of an open concept kind of green up cleanup day because we're not having designated. People picking up certain areas, I will, um, I did write to the woman and I called her uh tonight, this afternoon. Because I hadn't got a confirmation about the dumpsters, they were going to provide a dumpster, which would be placed next to the recycling dumpster. For the orange bags to be dropped off, and Mark is going to work with picking them up in front of residence homes. Um, if the dumpster doesn't come, Mark said that you could use his trailer and he parked that there. And I will tell the residents to put the orange bags on the trailer and I'll take it down to the dump and, and it will, the green up. We're not supposed to be paying for this, it shouldn't be of any cost to the, to the, to the town. So I'm sort of still waiting on the phone call to say, yes, we hired a dumpster or not, but it looks like we're, we're going to be good. Mark is going to have most of the area and I can't imagine that you'll get it all done. But most of them all went down so that people can get into the areas and, and do some pickup cleanup. But I actually, we've turned it around, it looks pretty good in town, but if there is any flood danger, people can also take care of that as well. But if they grind tires and things like that, that, that's always around. And if you have any questions, just reach out to me, I will uh try to get the triangle uh sandwich boards set up as well. Uh, by Friday, just to remind people. Next item, banking concerns and a discussion, there's no vote in here. Um, well, as you know, we, we, the wheeled excavator there was a, we did a wire transfer to pay for the wheeled excavator. And the bank in its redoing the numbers in-house, paid a fifty dollar omission in the number, but we. Sent that away, that's fine. Well, it turns out Melissa caught when she was doing her reconciliation of the checkbook, that there was a ten thousand dollar. Missing money and uh, make a long story short, um, the company that we.
Were jumping.
Purchased the, um. Mower from, we purchased the mower for, what was it, eleven thousand dollars and change, um. And we sent the check, paper check, and they got it. Um, and the mower was not being delivered in a timely fashion, we followed up on it, it seems to be that they had to. Uh, fabricate an attachment to fit onto the wheeled excavator, well, it did recently arrive. Uh, but when Melissa was going through it, she realized that we didn't pay eleven thousand dollars, we paid twenty-one thousand dollars.
Because the bank took an extra ten thousand dollars.
Well, the controller, into, yeah, the, um, when they deposited the check from Brookline. The deposit number was wrong and the bank computer, somebody either typed the decimal place off.
Oh, that's a bank error.
Thousand dollars instead of eleven thou, so, so instead of allowing the bank, notifying the bank and having the bank make the correction. Which the bank ended up doing, the controller used her wizardry. And reached it and did an ACH and took ten thousand. So the bank returned a ten, made the, made the payment whole, and the controller took ten. But it said, but did not report or notify us and those, they had it for over a month and had Melissa waited another month. For, you know, reconciliation of the accounts, they did not have reported that additional ten thousand dollars. So I was not very happy, I talked to the controller, she sounded awfully, uh. Guilty of doing, knowing that she had something illegal.
Controller did that?
Controller at the, uh, northeast attachment and track was the controller, and it into the bank. So I talked to Stan, Stan has shared some information with Melissa about a bank investment and, and trying to.
Bank error.
That's right, exactly.
It's a bank error.
The bank error.
And they did, and they fix it and they should retroactively record interest and.
I was responsible for reconciling the books of the bank for a solid year. Someone in the basement or the automatic reader of that check made a mistake, right?
Who?
So it's, we're okay, but it was, it was like, what else can go wrong?
This is why I always tell people who don't do bank reps that they should.
Because you find a ten thousand dollar mistake, because they make, banks do make mistakes. But it was interesting, when I did some research on it, that controller had to file a document with the bank in order to have the bank do the ACH correction. So the bank is complicit in something that they should.
They, they did an ACH retroactive again, so then.
There's supposedly.
Bank error.
If Melissa's interested, I printed out some of the reports for that kind of error process that she can acquire, if she's interested.
I wrote back interested.
I'm going to table the next item, we had brought it up earlier this year about putting on a, a, an external camera on the building. But there's been an awful lot of thefts in the area, Rattleborough Park thefts and refine and.
Seems to have calmed down a little.
A little bit, it's not being reported as much, but, um, uh, it is something that's, you know, a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars. It's something that I think we should discuss at another time, but I'm going to table this. That, um, the round schoolhouse, uh, historic plaque is up and the garden has been rototilled, thank you Drew. And the fabric is on it and it's been mulched, and I'm going to try to meet with the committee to do some planning for the garden. That, um, the select board has approved for using, uh, for using round schoolhouse monies, we have up to five hundred dollars to. To fix all that up, so.
I, I hope, I hope in the future they change their mind, like I'll speak up, I hope in the fu- future that they change their mind.
Oh, try to get the garden bigger?
They're wrapping around.
I can't, I, I just.
I know, you're on the committee.
For it, I just, I couldn't be responsible for getting all that planted in one year. I would like to have a garden club in town and we'd like to do a couple of things.
Well, I'll just put it out there and next time I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Tell it again, because it only takes twenty minutes.
Okay, but, um, round schoolhouse plaque is up and the garden is ready to plant. And that's all I have at this time, there's some other things later on, but, um, are there any other topics or discussion from select board members that you just recalled? Now that you'd like to share, Stan?
Yeah, Paul has been dealing with, uh, the website, website.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so, uh, I've looked at them, I'm comparing them with other towns. The format that was provided is pretty repetitive in the marketplace. Uh, I just wanted to do a little more research, I thought there was some suggestions that could be made later on down the line. So early next week, you'll hear from me.
Yeah, okay, great, I, I mean, that's, I wanted to bring that up, that, uh, I've sent two emails now about this. The first email was shared material that she had sent, she'd sent three different designs. I had some questions about what exactly she wanted to know from us. And so she answered that and I forwarded that email to you guys as well. I think it would be great if we could all, uh, if you could all send me your thoughts about it. Uh, by say, the next, before the next.
You're talking about the responsible three choices?
Pardon me?
Are you talking about the responsible three choices?
Response and any thoughts and any questions?
Yeah, because I, I asked her some questions about what she expected us to respond to. Because I looked at the, you know, the thing, and I, I didn't see a whole lot of differences between them.
Right. Except for the first one, maybe the one with the party, but the other ones, she.
But it's, it's the photography, I think that you reacted to.
Uh, that's what I reacted to was the photography, but that's not what she asked.
No, I mean, you really should look at the two emails and I think there was also the head, the headings is what she wanted to know about. So.
Yeah, well, yeah.
The photography concern.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you guys could look at that and, you know, get in touch with me about it and I'll get in touch with her, it would be good, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Excellent, and thank you Paul for doing that, I appreciate it. All right, next we have.
So, so one other thing. There's a emergency preparedness conference up at the Burke Mountain Hotel and Conference Center. It appears they have a Zoom meeting as well, and it's two days, Wednesday and Thursday of September 20th and 21st. I don't know if there's a charge or not, but, uh, I don't know if anyone would be interested in attending. I, if it's a Zoom and it's not costly, in light of the fact that we're working on hazard mitigation and we had that emergency. Uh, it came as an email, uh, I think it was for V, from V E M, I'll have to go back and.
Nine twenty and what?
Nine twenty and nine twenty-one. And they have, uh, they have three locations, it looks like they're trying to do a Zoom and with the real room number one. And then in person with the real room number two, and then for those who want real excitement, they're doing a meeting in the bar. It's a bar room, in person.
No, I'm just saying, I don't need posting that, that.
I'd be happy to send it along, both of, both of the two days, and, uh, again, I, I didn't ask any questions, but if anyone is interested. I, I, I think I, uh, one of us ought to go.
Yeah, I agree. And where, it's.
It, it, there's a Zoom, it, it's Burke Mountain Hotel, but I, I'm going to a guest that just put on the V E M, Vermont Emergency Management. Office up north, is probably putting this on.
Okay.
Because you, the topics, uh, it is a complete list of classes and they go until 3:15 in the afternoon. Starting at nine in the morning.
Oh, boy.
And there's a break from, not much of a break, 10:45 to 11 o'clock, long, fifteen minute.
Take on school.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that was the only other thing.
Share that again.
I'll send it around.
Okay, uh, next item is still going to be eight thirty, right there.
Yeah, well.
Unfinished visits, follow up on considering for the purchasing of town truck, discussing options on what and how to purchase. Uh, possibly voting, um, and, yeah. So, um, we, we did go to consider the purchase of a town truck, you received and you asked some information. From, um, Samara, which.
Thank you for doing all that work down.
I brought, I redid the schedule based on. Information from Roots.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, based on the interest rate ten days ago, but I don't think, I have no, no reason to think that it's changed.
Mark.
I, I've got what I need, but if you want.
Finance, I think the money part of it, that I would like, I sent out pictures and, and, and explanations to. Sister Mara, Paul and Stan, and of course you were there. And there was no reason for me to send that, you know, outside of Mark, he's, he's adorable, like, and I wanted to know if there was any. Questions or things that you were concerned about what you saw when I sent. I tried to be as explicit as I could around it, so standing next to the truck looking at, and I tried to point out the things that we saw. And point out, um, um, the test drive and how he looked at it. Uh, and I didn't miss a point because I took my time making sure that, uh, everything was covered. So, I'll ask the question again, does anybody have any questions related to the truck itself?
No, I think it was, it's, I.
Watch it blow up on us, so I'm human, it's still, so. Um, the way it was left with me, I had a, a conversation with them, Dustin, Dustin about three weeks ago. And I made him promise me that if something happened, give me a phone call, but he was to take it, he's, he had already taken it. And put it to the back of, he had been using a delivering stone for all the issues that we've been having in the settlement. And he emptied out the stone, he told me, and parked the unit in the back and put a first, a sole sign on it. And I told him, as soon as I had something to tell him, I would call him. And he promised me that if he had any issues, like if he decided to sell it for fifty thousand dollars to somebody else or something, he would call me. But I haven't received that phone call and I didn't injure, I didn't interject doing it again until we talked.
Right.
So that's, not to get too long into that. Um, I also, at that time, guys, you probably know, it's called Brader Pearl Savings and Loan. Um, per Melissa's recommendation, uh, Stephanie Houston. And if we pursue the loan way that's in here, which is five point. Five point.
I did it at five point five percent, not using the, whatever the interest rate was from Brader Pearl Savings and Loan. A little less.
If I'm let loose to go there and pursue that, uh, what will happen next is I tell Stephanie Houston, okay, she's the system loan officer. I go and visit her, we have a meeting, and anyways, welcome to come if they choose to come. Um, and she has requested, the bank has requested four things, three years of financials, can be town reports. Internal financials, et cetera, I want to break in here, did I say that Melissa, you, uh, recommended Stefan's?
Yeah.
And the second thing is a copy of the invoice or bill of sale for the equipment to be purchased. And the third thing is copy of the select board minutes evidencing approval of the loan. And the last is verification on who can sign on behalf of the town, it says pretty, pretty basic stuff as far as I could tell. I also, because I have pictures, I'll interject showing them the pictures of the truck, just to drive it home. And I don't know where we'll go from there, but.
And that particular vendor said it's a thirty day.
Thirty thousand miles, I know, I know Stan's going to ask, I don't have the specifics of that thirty day thousand mile warranty. But I will clear that up as soon as I get the go ahead commuall to call again and go, go to the, to sue the sale. I'll want, I'll want, obviously it's got to be written and I want to know what it is. That's that. Um, also, we get, I think I said, we get, we get, uh, paper plates so that we can drive a vehicle home. And then we can register it to, 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 or to register it, so yeah. Um, okay, I'm going to turn the floor over for a few minutes if I can, that's my floor. To Samara about the different ways to think about financing this, but before I do, I just want to reiterate. That we're only talking financing, twenty-six thousand dollars, sixty-six, I go to sixty-six twenty thousand, I'm pretty close.
Sixty-six, twenty-four then.
Sorry, I was a fool.
It's, it's twenty percent.
And that's twenty percent, that's their fifth requirement.
Standard.
Which is standard, and if we choose not to have a loan alone. I, I understand that, but I don't think we should look at it as a personal household, I don't want to be funny that way. But what I'm saying is, when at which time, like Melissa said, I'll call when we get a hundred fifty thousand back, back from FEMA. The floodgates open, we can just pay the damn thing off and the interest.
We want no prepayment penalties.
There isn't.
And then, that's the advantage, I think, is, is.
I asked her twice, actually.
Of financing.
Would she be willing to give you a blank copy of the actual note that we would be signing?
I don't see why not, I haven't asked you.
And typically, I mean, as a loan officer, I was asked that question and I answered, it was always yes.
Well, you, you, this is your department, I mean, I inform my land with construction loan.
Because the, the, the question of prepayment penalty is one concept. The other is how do you calculate payoff, which is a totally different concept. Which we ran into with the four wheel excavator.
Now, how long has it been since you've been driving the same, so it's probably all changed since.
Well, statutes are pretty much the same. And by virtue of how this is being handled, they're, they're, they're probably not doing it as a straight commercial loan. It's probably being done as a, as a town loan, but with the same conditions as it would be for an individual walking in. You need to be a percent down, we want to know you're serious about it, we want to know you're going to take care of it, the initial equity is required. So, the, the question, the most alarming, I don't say alarming, I don't know. The, the concern I would have is defining the term financial statements or town and board.
Okay.
They're, they're. They're, they're, I mean, when they're, when they're asking a business to blank the application, it's generally three years of their tax filings. And, or, and of course, we don't have any, uh, their financial statements, so. I don't know whether town report is gonna meet that or not, whether, whether they want it audited or not, I don't know.
I don't know, I asked it to Melissa and I think that's what she said, I'm not sure. And I can get your, I'll try to get your copy of that, of the, of the actual loan itself, so we can analyze it. Um, Samara, do you want to say something?
No, I was going to say, you really need to just ask her, you know, explain, we don't have an external auditor. And that we have internal audits.
Okay.
Because, for example, Newfane does have them, they have an independent auditor.
That's true.
And make sure there's no gum up there.
Okay, no, she didn't mention it, but I, I, that would come with a financial.
Working with other small towns, it would not be. A, if, if she's familiar with working with other small towns, it might be just fine.
Well, I think.
If she, but, but so many towns now, but like, for example. I, I don't want to digress, it's not important, but you should clarify that.
Okay, uh, well, that comes in the explanation of the financial reasons. I'm gonna ask her straight up what exactly you want. I'm not gonna say to her, um, no, we don't have an external audit, we have an internal audit. What I'll say to her is, what are your, what are your specifics that you want for the financial a- analysis? And, and do that.
Because we do, we have a consolidated balance sheet and we have, uh, P and, and the essential equivalent of a P and L report.
Okay.
But, and we have an auditors, an internal auditor's opinion, but we do not have outside of town, but, but we use town auditors. That should be clear, and you should make that.
If I'm funny with it, I could just put it on the phone with Melissa and friends.
You could have Melissa talk to it.
And that would be the best.
That would probably be a really good idea.
So I think I'll go that route, I'll get you the copy that you requested, which is how long these are, so you can analyze.
She should be able to do that, there should be nothing that she needs to hide.
I doubt it.
And, and or if, if you are providing her, if she's saying this is your sale price, this is what we want. She, uh, actually could be giving you a disclosure if she chose to, but I, I don't think we need that. The issue is, find out the questions that, and I'm not sure that, you know.
That you're serving, you're gonna be a prepayment and, and whether there's a different way they calculated.
Yeah.
Now, I, I, that should stay right in the contract.
The only thing that I.
Uh, not necessarily. It might state the method, which is better than, well, you know, I mean, what we had with the four wheel excavator is not, there was no method other than what it appeared to be. Which was, we were gonna pay a whole month's worth of, of our, of our rental fee and they were gonna keep it. As opposed to giving us back the money that we should have been given back because we didn't lease it for the whole month. So, this is not a lease, it should be straightforward, but when I was in lending, there were two methods of, of calculating payoffs. I forget what the terms for each one was.
Okay.
But they're calculated on different numbers of the year, one at three sixty-five, one at three hundred.
Should we, should we, like, you know, the fine points of the financing.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop this, I, I'd like you a few minutes to talk. Okay, I would like to give you my opinion, my, or my, my, here, it is. We're talking about looking at another loan. We just took out a hundred and ten thousand dollar loan, one for the excavator, which we really, really needed. And I know we do, and I am totally in support of getting a truck for the town. Because even in reviewing the letter that was sent around, lessons learned, how I read from Windham Regional, Chris Campini, we really need to be prepared. Being without full services for up to seventy-two hours, we may be cut off from other towns with some of the other storms. This is how the hurricane coming up the Atlantic Coast, who knows what that is and what kind of damages that's going to be. Bruce, you mentioned that FEMA is a little bit in trouble because of all the costs that they're spending, or lots of. No, I, 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 I looked it up, I read it, but I just want to say, so, we're talking about another loan. I also have on here that we may need to get a loan in anticipation of taxes to cover some of the, the final ends. Because as we saw with Melissa, we get eighty-eight thousand dollars for four times a year for the highway fund. All right, there's no, can we look at other, first of all, we can look at lines of credit. You had mentioned that, I thought that was an ideal thing, I've mentioned briefly to, to Melissa. Couldn't we take a home equity loan on, on the daycare and this way we would have a line of credit as a town needed for an emergency use? Because then it would be much lower than five and a half percent, Melissa said, I don't see why not, but she would look into it.
It's not a home.
It's not a home, but it's, it's an equity loan. Well, let me just, let me just.
Sam.
Go ahead.
Let her finish her thing.
Okay, so we have the, the big loan, we're looking at another loan that's gonna be out for the taxpayers for five years and anticipation of tax. When you talk about FEMA money coming in, that FEMA money was not a hundred percent paying for our work. It's either percentage, seventy-five percent, ninety percent, in some areas, it's a hundred percent reimbursement. But that was to go back into the budget and plug the holes that were raised over the past three years. We are below our basic minimum standards of having finances available for the next emergency.
That's a different issue.
It is, and it's another issue, I agree. Talking about doing loans is gonna mean that we're having another delay because you have to satisfy what, the paperwork that Stan wants to see. Because we won't be able to vote on doing the loan tonight because it's not something that we feel comfortable on. We have ARPA money, we have thirty-three thousand dollars, we can buy it tonight, we have it by the weekend.
But is that the best use of the money?
I understand, it, 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 for this town, the ARPA, ideally, it is something we don't have to ask the residents about. It's a hundred percent.
We should, we should.
We should have.
Survey the residents.
You should survey them, but also for persons in this equipment as well.
The ARPA money is a discretion of slow point.
We don't have to survey.
Point, point, point number one. Point number two is when you remove that ARPA money, that got it there, you can't replace it. Anything else you can, like you sort of.
What else is it gonna be used for? This is ideal, ideal.
I'll answer your question.
Perfect.
I'll answer your question if I'm giving up or giving.
Go ahead.
There's a building down the street called the Meeting House, which I referred, called Brookline Arts and Community Center, but that's a different argument. Which I would pay for to replace a sign of that generic name, that's a beautiful building. And it is clear to me that this town wants that building finished. And I'm telling you, the way I see it, and I know it's just as best as anybody else, that building's gonna take a hundred grand to finish it. Do we want it finished in twenty years? Do we not want to finish it?
How much of the ARPA do you want to use? Because it's not using at all, it's thirty-three thousand out of ninety-four.
And you're gonna drop it down to, so you're gonna drop it down to thirty, forty thousand left in ARPA. And you only have, if I remember right, only about a net at the best, we're spending money on the steeple, of about twenty-seven thousand dollars in, in their budget. We're nowhere near close to finishing that, that building was the money. Just a minute.
Town.
What's that?
It's more important for the town and the residents, more residents would be served by having the roads in excellent condition than they will by.
Well, we, 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 that's.
The Meeting House, but it's.
The only thing that I would add, and the only thing, in my opinion, then, is there are two things. Businesses think a little bit differently about loans than you're talking. Um, that was just an idea, I mean, for a long time, no. But using your cash, using your cash, using your capital to buy a piece of equipment, when you have the opportunity. I mean, in this case, we're, we know we have federal money coming back to us and we can pay the loan off early. You can put the capital to work, I've asked Melissa if she's looked at putting anything that we're not using right away into a higher paying CD.
You did CDs.
Right, but if you, but if you take thirty-three thousand dollars out of your CD, if they mount, you can put into a CD, you don't have it.
Well, we would have the vehicle here, we would be able to use it, by the way.
The vehicle is not critical to the town right now, Dot.
Neither is the Meeting House, neither.
Neither is the Meeting House, it's not critical either.
Not critical.
But looking long-term down the road, you know, I don't know, you know, I've just, I think the idea of taking the cash out of the ARPA money that. You can't, I mean, I don't understand the concept of not being able to refund it, the money's gonna, the other money's gonna come from other thing. And in terms of borrowing money from, from, when I'm, the one thing I wondered when I looked at our cash position is that, um. Um, do, how much are our school taxes? Because we really need to look more at cash flow than revenues. And, um, because there's, there's a lot.
Anticipate.
There's a lot of cash in the bank right now and the loans can borrow from each other. Technically, we should be doing written agreements if we borrow from our loans. But in the past, it's been done, the highway fund has frequently borrowed from the town administrative fund. Because the ca, the taxes don't come in all at once at the beginning of the year, like many towns get one payment. They have all the, all, everybody has to pay their taxes upfront in one lump sum. And then every fund gets its full funding, except for delinquencies, of course. So, you know, it's, it's.
This doesn't interfere with the budget, let's face it. We've taken a sixty-six hundred and twenty-four dollar down and a five hundred dollar a month payment. If it makes everybody happy, I'll pay my taxes early, as long as it, once we have a loan approval and you can pay the next first two months. Then we only have seven left at, at thirty-five hundred dollars. You know, this is getting ridiculous. It is, because this is a municipality of, 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 of a balance sheet about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This isn't Bruce Muller's house, which is X amount of dollars.
Yes, this isn't on topic, but what I would say is, the choice between whether to pay cash or to finance it. I understand, and I don't think financing is a bad option, as a personal opinion. The other thing that I think, and this is one of my opinions about buying the truck, is if we have a truck. The work isn't gonna get done any faster with one person, so we have to have.
We'll start to get another person. Salary account to cover one or two extra assistance for Mark, we know that.
Good, because that's my main concern.
There's over fifty thousand dollars in that salary line item, fifty-two thousand dollars. So there's plenty of money in there to cover additional expenses.
And, and, you know, if, and, and there will be, there will be, there should be money that's in the highway budget that isn't gonna be there next year anyway. Presumably, we put in extra money for, for FEMA and things to pay back that we haven't yet. You know, that will come, some of that money will come back. The FEMA, the FEMA, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting very tired, so I'm gonna stop talking.
I understand, I feel the same way, but.
I mean, you mentioned the ARPA money, um, the Meeting House. My question is, how come we haven't already spent the money to fix up the Meeting House?
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
How come we haven't already spent the money to fix up?
We did, we did have a fifteen thousand dollar.
It keeps going up and down.
But you're saying it's a hundred thousand.
No, no, I, no, what I meant was, it's a hundred thousand in my estimation to finish that.
I'm talking.
So if we.
If it's, if we can't use it, what good is it? I mean, that's the thing, it's like, what is stopping the town from using? You're talking about the ARPA money.
Well, we used it, we used it in July. Okay, but. I don't understand your point.
The building isn't usable right now.
That's true.
And I'm saying.
That's what make it usable.
Yeah, so, but why hasn't it been done? That's my question.
Lack of cash.
You, but you just.
We have.
Well, I'll give you an example, give you an example, I'll give you an example. The mold remediation. We had an issue back when about the, about the backs, which we, we had an extra seven to ten thousand dollars or whatever it was.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I brought it up, I'm sorry, I brought it up.
No, you made a point though, and the building has to be out of it before you use it.
I think with the building, it needs to, we, we have a survey and it goes to the people, I mean, it's a town building. Right, I mean, if we can buy the truck, cash, and not have to worry about delaying it for another two weeks because we have.
That doesn't make any sense, you're talking.
That's a matter of opinion.
Of course it is.
You know.
That, that's my opinion, but you're looking at three thousand dollars in interest over the course of five years. And if that, let's say it takes six months, six months.
Economically, it makes more sense to me to finance it.
I, I, we don't have, frankly, in my personal opinion, a very strong financial statement. We don't have a very strong financial statement.
No.
There's no sense of cash flow.
No.
There are parts of our year that I think that when we get there, we're gonna find we don't have money. We will be robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you got these commitments for payments that you have to make. I don't see any provision to set aside the two thousand plus dollars to make our twenty-five thousand dollar payment the end of June of next year. From a standpoint of cash flow and budget, our budget sucks. I don't, I, I would confer, I, I appreciate, and I think if I were to vote, I'd be very, thinking along the lines of Don's thinking about. That buy it, get it outright, don't commit yourself to anything. The, the, the building of the Meeting House, there was one very important question that wasn't asked in the survey, and that is, do you as taxpayers feel you should pay for that? What it was, what the question was, do you think work ought to be completed on the Meeting House? There are two completely different questions. And when, when the building was taken over, the citizens at the time said, as long as we don't have to pay for. And I doubt that, I know we've had a turnover, but I doubt very much that if you put that question on a town meeting.
It was one of the answers on the question survey.
But, but, I don't believe it was phrased in a manner that said you as taxpayers would pay.
They didn't want, yeah.
So, a, again, that question of will you pay for it as a taxpayer was not asked. So we're dealing with responses to an answer, a question that didn't put it on the burden on the shoulders of the taxpayer. And I think we ought to do that before we make assumptions that they're willing to pay for. A town of five hundred and fifty-nine people, to spend that kind of money, what services is that building not providing that are essential for our citizens? And I don't, I don't know if there's a, an answer to that question that's honest and straightforward and truthful. You can, you can, you can play ping pong or whatever, but that's, isn't that available elsewhere than asking an investment of two, three hundred thousand dollars in a building?
That vehicle is necessary for the town, I think we should go for it, I think we should be responsible and not put an additional tax levy on it.
So, we're diminishing the value of the Meeting House all of a sudden, we just got through that.
Well, it's an opinion.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, we just had a survey that was pretty damn clear, anywhere from seventy to ninety percent want that building used. And like Paul said, you cannot use that, that building in that state.
I'll need to go back and look at the survey.
We have a mixed, we have a mixed opinion about, I'm not saying the ARPA money should be used for that.
That's not.
This has nothing to do with my thinking.
That's different, that's for a different argument, you're right.
My thinking is, it just, to me, I look at the numbers, I look at the cash, you could put, you know, eighty thousand dollars into a CD. And, and be earning four point five percent interest.
Fifty percent down, what's seventy percent down? Why only twelve point margin percent?
Why don't you wait till you see what the bank says first, where the answers are. Oh, then wait another month? We're gonna, we're gonna wait another month, I'm gonna keep this guy hanging for another month unless I pursue saying to him, oh, but don't worry about it, we're gonna pay cash for it. We can't do that, we're, we're tying him up for seven weeks. Samara, you had something?
Before I pull the question.
The other thing you could, you could, to just play devil's advocate, there will always be other trucks out there. It might not be as good, but there are other trucks, I know they're out there on the market.
We saw that, that one in Rockland, we saw how, well, that was.
No, but I.
I agree, this is one who's really.
It's carried.
Truck, it's just, I, what I'm hearing is we, we seem to be, have a consensus that the truck would be a good purchase for the town.
Yes.
The debate is whether or not it's beneficial to.
ARPA money or?
Use ARPA money or, I mean, for that matter, Dot, if you financed it now, you could pay it off with ARPA money if you found out we were in trouble.
There you go. Problem solved.
So why use up the cash right now?
Really, why?
Because I didn't want to have a five-year another loan and then we're gonna talk about a third loan later on.
Dot, it's only thirty thousand, one hundred dollars in interest for five freaking years, if we get that money, a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's, it's a, it's a matter of five hundred and one dollars a payment a month. That's, has, that has an importance in and of itself, it's a required.
Justin, it's not that big.
Why didn't the town want a truck previous?
I think frankly, most select boards have been afraid to do it because it is a burden on the town.
Now, I defer, defer to the road foreman. Mark, can you tell me, how, how many miles of roads have been sassed? In, in, A O, what do we have?
Seventy.
Can you tell me what they have for road crew and equipment, real quick, so we don't owe your whole money there? Oh, it doesn't matter, I think it matters.
No, 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 Bruce, I didn't.
Yes, it does, go ahead.
I'm not even arguing with you, I'm saying you, you gotta listen to what other people are saying.
You just have to decide what we want to do.
Okay, call the question.
All right, I had a call the question, uh, the question is, um, what are the options and, on what and how to purchase? How does this, I make a motion that we use ARPA funds to purchase the truck one hundred percent through ARPA funds? That could be one question, it could be fifty percent through ARPA funds, or it could be your twenty percent. That could be one question. It could be fifty percent through ARPA funds, or it could be your twenty percent. Through ARPA funds, correct? What's, what is, where's the down here? The twenty percent is coming.
I would agree with that, that's okay, for six thousand bucks, I'll compromise to that.
We could even go, I mean, why do six thousand, why not just do it?
We have to get past state one.
Tonight, so we're gonna work it out tonight. Because you want permission to go to the loan officer and secure a loan. So we wanna have, I, I don't wanna wait another two weeks.
I don't either. We agree for a change.
You know, the bottom line is by the end of the year, this is gonna be a moving thing.
We, we have, I'm worried about the twenty-five thousand we owe too.
Yeah, because there'll be, there'll be cash money in the coffers from FEMA highway. Side of the budget that will be flushed.
What are, what are our current loan payments for the other loan?
Twenty-five thousand plus a year.
Balloon payment in June.
One-time balloon payment in June. And it's paid once a year?
Yes.
And it's due once a year.
And we don't have anything budgeted for.
It wasn't in the budget.
This time, except for ARPA.
But, we have twenty-four thousand, excuse me, wrong number. And this, excuse me, bear with me for a second. And the summer contract services fund, we have thirty-six thousand dollars that's supposed to be put in there. Which will not be spent because we.
We don't have the cash.
No, but, in, in June.
Only a quarter of it.
In June, okay, but in June.
Well. Can't guarantee it.
We can't guarantee anything like that. But, but, once we get into the center.
Is the ARPA money for collateral on the loan?
Right, that's what I was thinking. We go, I go to the bank, I said, we got eighty thousand bucks here, what do you guys want?
There, there are certain, there are certain types of loans that a town is only able to get. I don't believe that's one. I don't believe pledging the property to the town is another.
What if we? I can, you can table this and have a special meeting?
Tonight, I like the idea of voting tonight. And what if we can't get a loan, then?
That's a point.
That's, that's in the back of my mind, frankly.
Because it may happen because we're a small town. What if we can't get a loan? And then, are you okay with using ARPA money?
I. Hundred percent.
If that's the only way to get the truck?
Yes.
Okay, what kind of?
I don't like it, I don't like it.
I understand why you don't like it because I look at the numbers and I understand.
We're saying we're not gonna get it.
To get the truck?
I agree.
Or is it more important to fight about how to finance it? Sorry, guys.
I don't like the idea of spending thirty-three thousand dollars only to finance it, but I don't know yet. I have to sit down with Stephanie to see what she says.
How about Hannah?
Let's see with it, let's see what the bank says.
So we're tabling this?
No, let's vote to, oh, for pricing.
Make your mind up.
Make my mind up?
Let's see or let's vote? We have to have more than a twenty percent this, uh, down payment. I don't think that's fair somehow, you know, I just.
Why don't we go with these? And see what happens.
The first part of that one?
That, if Dot's, Dot's feeling is that she, well, we could compromise and do a larger down payment. That would be a good compromise position to take. So more than twenty percent, but less than a hundred percent.
Okay, and not touch the budget, not touch the budget at all, not touch the future expenses that are coming in at all.
Wait, I don't know, I don't.
When I, obviously, I discussed this on a great length with Melissa. And we're not talking a huge amount of money here. We see, you mentioned it a little while ago about this winter mission grants. When I first, when this is thirty thousand, two thousand dollars.
That's, you're talking next year.
You, you can't, you can't go tell.
None of this is, that's gonna happen next year.
Talking about.
Tell the taxpayers, we're gonna, we're gonna budget for this, this, and this, so a puppies, kittens, and cows, and then you're gonna go buy a horse instead. You, you, you can't, you, we, it's in the budget.
What happens? What happens? We get the hundred and fifty thousand dollars from FEMA comes back. You said, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, you said, plug in the horse. What the hell does that mean, Dot?
The paving fund got, got emptied out, plus the seven, the twenty, up to twenty-five percent.
I mean, what's the number?
That they've often depleted. When you look at our budget, our but, we have in our budget, I saw nine different areas. From what was sent out that are in error. There's eighty thousand dollars for the municipal loan fund. That's a liability, it's in the asset column. We have two capital improvement funds. One says forty-six hundred dollars for capital improvement. And the other one says we have twenty-four thousand, twenty-four hundred dollars in a capital improvement. What is what? We've got so many errors, there's three hundred one dollars in the Brookline Meeting House that should have been used for the refrigerator. There's a seven hundred dollars for the windows that wasn't pulled out.
I am not ready, oh, well, I'm sorry. Well, that just happened.
Well, I studied it.
Well, good for you.
It's horrible.
So what do you wanna do, Dot? Fuck thirty-three thousand dollars out of Arpa. I'm not into it. You can all vote the other way. I don't think it's a good idea. We can always change. What we pay for that vehicle. We can always pay the loan off.
And why go through all the trouble, all the documentation, go through the closing? Get the loan and go through the tightening process with a lien holder, et cetera, et cetera. If, if, if we can just obviate that, get rid of that and just own it outright.
I understand using the cash, I understand, but. It's the best way, it's the, it's the cleanest cut. That's how we did the mower. It's eleven thousand dollars from our. It's eleven thousand dollars from. What we had in the budget and apply to, I'm not taking money from a grant. Line and putting it towards a mower, taking it from the salary line, putting it towards a, a truck. I just don't, that's, that's how towns get in trouble.
The thing that I find, I don't know if I should use the word embarrassing. But I don't know what else to use for. We've created a town report. That had a lot of ifs and promises. Actually, it wasn't ifs, it was promises. This is where we are, this is what we're gonna do. There was no mention about any of this, these other expenditures, which happened out of the blue. And it's because we just, we have justified, we have, we have justifiable reasons. That we did it because there are parts of it that are gonna pay for itself if they haven't already, and to some extent. But I don't feel comfortable. Creating a totally different balance sheet. Come the next town and people are gonna say, should we even trust them with this one? We can't trust them with what they told us last year.
Standing up there answering their questions.
We, and if it was an issue now, and if it was that important, it should have been an issue last November descent. And it wasn't. We did, we created the budget we created, and all of a sudden we get these curves coming our way. We gotta do this, we gotta do this. And, you know, it's, we get the cash, we can do this, or we, you know, I just, I don't feel comfortable proceeding down the path that we're currently going.
Donate a hundred thousand dollars to the New Brook Fire Company. We couldn't even get in five thousand because we haven't, we don't have any money.
We'd never had that much money.
Are you saying that you don't think we should bother driving?
I, I think in light of the fact that we've heard from Mark a couple of times about the fact that it is a burden, it's his personal vehicle, kind of taken advantage of him. And, and, you know, I mean, he had a chance to leave and the, the conditions were that at the time he was gonna use the truck. But, you know, there's a clamor to, we should, we, we, we need. There's a way of limiting some of the cost of the trucking of the materials that we're using, we still gotta pay for the materials, et cetera. And I'm looking at the cost of the truck, it's, it seems like a hell of a deal. I don't mind spending the money again, but I don't wanna, I feel uncomfortable. Just conceptually, creating another loan. This isn't a private household. You maximize your, leverage your cash as much as you can. This is a town government that has a different philosophy. There's a reason there is an annual report. It should carry you through the next twelve months in an understandable fashion that makes sense as. Today as it did back last November, without clouding the whole cash position of the town and the finances of the town. In a very drastic, different way than what was committed and promised and indicated, or led to believe this is where we are.
I get it. So what I'm hearing is both you and Dot feel that. It's kind of like. Pulling the rug out from under the taxpayers.
Yeah, exactly, that's how I feel exactly.
We have this federal ARPA money, and if we think we have a truck, it's a valid purpose to use it for the truck. And as from a business sense, it's not generally speaking the best use of your capital, but we're not a business, we're a government. On the other side of the coin, I would tell you that most other towns carry, they have, all have lines of credits and loans.
We don't have loans.
And we don't. And if we, and it would be this, a loan in a line of creditor, I mean, they're both loans. So you, you know, you just, they're differently structured loans, but they're both loans.
There's, there's another town.
And that's both creates debt. So drawing your line of credit, you're creating debt. So it's not, it's not an unusual idea for a town to take on some debt. I mean, that's, it's not an unusual, but you're not comfortable with it, so I get it.
You gotta look at the numbers. I mean, I, I mean, there's a town, I'm not, on camera, gotta mention its name. Who operates on those kinds of philosophies. And a year or two ago, there was a change in the treasurer's position there. So they hired an outside firm to come in and give them an idea of what they're doing, because there's costs that that town has committed itself. That are extremely high and inexpensive. And the person that came in, the entity that came in and audited it. Ultimately said to the town mothers and fathers, why in the world did you do that?
Well.
You know, and I'm looking at our little town of three hundred and thirty properties, nowhere near as big as that other town is. Drastically smaller population. We have delinquent taxes that were a five-figure number, they're still a five-figure number, but lower. And, and the taxes are due, you know, November fifteenth. And I'm, I'm thinking, I, I would like to have as less on the books owed to everyone, to other people. As, as possible.
Was there a consideration of the savings that we're gonna have by having the truck?
That will pay for the, the maintenance.
I see it right here.
The savings will pay. Yes, but we, we're not talking about.
Cut me off, damn it. You're cutting me off.
We don't have.
Don't cut me off.
Fall on the question. The question is, shall we use thirty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars on ARPA funds?
Bruce, you're up.
I have a second.
Oh, should I have a second?
Second, we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of using ARPA funds, the total amount of thirty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars to purchase the truck. Signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed?
No.
Those abstaining?
Let's stay in the joint.
So we have no vote, no truck will be purchased. Moving on, next item. Is. Consideration of a loan anticipation of taxes. Being alone in anticipation of taxes, we sprung this up a while ago, and I wanted to know how we are going to, um. Function.
Why, okay, so why did we decide we needed a loan in anticipation of taxes? Not because, because when you did the budget last year.
Because of the new storm that came in was, it's on, we have unfunded. We have new unfunded damages to take care of.
Right, and can we borrow from our internal funds before we?
I think we need to sit down with our treasurer, and I, I think there's so many. Line items and problems in the way that. Something that you have setting up will work, but.
Well, a loan in anticipation of funds is kind of a no-brainer.
One of the things you said to me was, why don't you guys take a loan now?
I did say that, but you set the budget. You know, before you raised all these additional revenues in the budget, you could have just, I mean, the budget is done for this year. So it's like you're kind of like.
We have a new, new storm.
We do have a new storm, but, so, I, I guess. In terms of cash flow, if you think we need it, we can look into tax notes and.
I'm gonna suggest we table this, bring it up at the next meeting. We'll have to talk to our treasurer, get some of these gaps closed up. For example, the town municipal bond is in an asset fund, it's a liability, and we don't even, yeah. So this is gonna be.
Municipal bond is a liability.
Well, we owe eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we pay it twice a year.
I, I, I realize that, but on our balance sheet, I think it appears as a lower.
Does not apply as a liability, because it isn't treated that way in the way we do our accounting.
But is that?
Know we owe the money. We know we owe the money, but we don't have. But it was expensed at the time we took out the loan and the year the loan was taken out, so it was written off as an expense. Because that's unmodified cash at, at the time is, is done, not modified accrual, modified cash. Modified accrual is similar, you have different rules on what revenue you can take. So, yes, we owe that money, and there's a scheduled payment and required every year. There's never a cash shortage because we must raise the taxes.
And that's in our budget, ten thousand dollars.
That's budgeted at the year, so that's not really a problem.
Well, then I'm having a trouble, problem unders, misunderstanding, or understanding the finances.
Finance budgets.
Because it shows negative numbers, and then there's this eighty thousand that fails us out.
Not the same as the balance sheet. I mean. The budget, we don't budget our balance sheet, we budget our, our, our revenue and we budget our expenditures. And as long as you have a break-in even budget, you're not creating further debt.
I need to get the document and point out what I'm talking about, and, and or to Melissa and you.
Okay.
And it probably would be a good way to have Melissa at a meeting like this to talk about this.
We're, we're going back to new business because he, we, we put unfinished business before new business.
Okay, I just thought.
All right, so I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to run through this real quick, some new business. The appointment of the planning commission, I'd like to appoint Oliver Ames to the planning commission, may I have a second?
Second.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor of appointing Oliver Ames to the planning commission, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. I'd like to appoint Stan Nova to the planning commission, may I have a second?
Also.
Seconded by Paul, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Stan Nova to the planning commission, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Charlie Ezekiel is already on it, Barbara Born is already on it.
I, I'd like to be on it.
Okay, I, I make a motion to appoint Samara Zawick to the planning commission, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any other, uh, options for the planning commission, please bring to my attention for the next meeting. Motion seconded. Appointment to the energy commission, I'd like to appoint two to the energy commission. Where did we say? Samara, John, and Doc Dan are on the energy commission, correct? Were any other energy commission members, not, you know, your point, all right, not applicable, not applicable. Appointment to the hazard mitigation committee.
Oliver Ames expressed.
I'd like to make an appointment of Oliver Ames. To the, to the mitigation committee, may I have a second? Seconded by Stan, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Oliver Ames on the hazard mitigation committee signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Uh, any other appointments to the hazard mitigation? I, I'd like to appoint myself.
I'll nominate Dot Maggio to the position for hazard mitigation.
Can I have a second for Dot Maggio on the mitigation committee? Seconded by Paul, any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Dot Maggio being on the hazard mitigation committee signify by saying aye. Opposed? Anybody else interested in being on the hazard mitigation committee?
Chris Daly had, had, in an email and, and a, a conversation, uh, had asked to be on the planning and mitigation committee.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh, well then, I didn't get that email, so sure.
I'd like to make, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Chris Daly to the, uh, hazard mitigation committee, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Chris Daly on the mitigation committee signify by saying aye.
Can I make a motion? Add Chris Daly to the planning commission?
All right, we have a motion to add Chris Daly to the, uh, planning commission, may, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of having Chris Daly on the planning commission signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Uh, painting RFP, that's not now, motions, RFP, thanks. I'm gonna, uh, skip E and table E because of the time. I'd like to discuss very briefly that the budget stabilization fund should not be used for paying for, uh. I'd like to discuss very briefly that the budget stabilization fund should not be used for paying for uh. Material improvements uh for building expenses. And that we use uh the capital improvement maintenance fund for that, we can call it whatever. But I did notice that there are two of them in the line items.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think this was ever a policy, but it's typical when you're, when you're making like, if you hit, we should set a dollar amount. So what should be cap, what we should use capital for? And what we should use, what we should treat as just repair and maintenance? Because there should be like, 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 generally speaking, if you're. Hmm, if you're putting in heat pumps, that's a capital improvement.
That's a big improvement.
But if you have, like, if you go out and you buy a hundred dollar air conditioner. Make it just, well, there would be, they could all, they could go either way, but it's considered nominal. And it's more of a consideration in um taxable entities. It doesn't matter so much for um for governmental and nonprofits. But I would suggest that that might be a good guideline for deciding what should be a capital expenditure. What should just go on summer repair and maintenance line?
Unfortunately, we did not develop a line item for covering the maintenance costs for the school building.
Add a, add a line item.
So I would like to have information on doing that, we'll put that on the next meeting.
Just, we should just tell this, the treasurer to add a maintenance line.
And where does the money come from to put in that line?
You, well, there is no budget for the school, I mean, we don't budget for that.
It's taken away.
It's, it's used to come out of their rents.
Right, so I'm saying we should have a budget for that.
Well, then, yeah, then, I know, but in the meantime. The reason why you want to put it there is because you want to know how much you actually spend for repair and maintenance. And so. If you don't.
See how much total revenue that you have.
No, 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 no.
Cause that was a revenue.
No, no, no.
Am I wrong?
Let, let's say, let's say you need to do buckets, like, for example, the major improvement to the pipes, the. The pipes and, and the things that break, then I would put in capital for sure. That's a capital improvement, you have to repair it and it's big. You know? I wouldn't. It, but, but usually what you do is you put it, you, you set a dollar amount. You say, okay, everything over a thousand dollars, we capitalize and everything under a thousand dollars, we expense. It's just a ballpark number, you can set the number, any number, any way you want. But um, what happens is, is if you bury things in different line items. You, you don't, you have to make, you know, you don't know how many, how much repairs actually cost. You're like, wait, are we improving the building or are we just like buying buckets and mops? Well, buckets and mops are supplies, usually I think it used to be a line item called supplies and maintenance. For the school.
We never had a line item for the supply and maintenance.
Well, I think we did, when, when I, when, I don't know where we put it back in the day when I was there.
We took over the. We took it over from the women's, women's supervisory agency. We didn't have any money for the first year and a half.
No, we, we went, we had a deficit.
Always.
I remember.
Have it specified.
But no. I didn't look at the balance sheet recently enough to remember what the balance is in the school fund.
Zero, we zeroed it out, we paid it to the deposit for the uh wheeled excavator.
Oh, you took all the money out of the school fund for the wheeled excavator?
That was the deposit.
Why?
Because we had to have a deposit.
Why didn't we take it out of our?
We took some out, we took, we took.
Zero, I would have taken it.
We took sixteen thousand dollars from the rental line, one, two thousand dollars from the highway equipment. We took twenty-two-five from the school fund and the rest out of our.
If you start, if you start allocating money to other funds where it doesn't belong.
They did belong, it was highway fund, rental, we put it in.
But I'm. With school related expenses, if you start taking the money out of other funds to pay for. I guess it could be a capital building improvement, you could take it out of the capital fund. But not typically repairs and maintenance, because that you, you lose sight of. Of instead, what I would consider doing is. Charging it to the school fund, so you know it was a school expense and not burying it in another fund.
Is, is it school or daycare?
Day, well, this is the school building, the school building, okay? Charge it to the school building fund. So that you understand that it was related to the school building. And then, if at the end of the year, there's a deficit, you have to take money from somewhere else to pay off the deficit. You have to.
Rather than doing this upfront, rather than doing uh capital improvement fund or the forty thousand. Tip, tipping into the budget stabilization renovate fund.
The reason why you don't do it, because information wise, you're misleading yourself. You know, you're like going, oh, wait, we didn't run, we didn't have that many repairs, because we can't track them. They're all in the school fund. They're all in the capital fund. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Not really.
It's.
But I think, I think I know.
It's like when, you know, it's.
This is why.
I think we used to put repairs under supply.
Sarah?
Yeah.
This is why I didn't want to do that one year. But we were having an issue with the budget, to be fair to the other two people we were on the select board at the time. We were having a hard time balancing this budget, we had everybody and his mother coming out of his money. And that's no joke, everything was increased. That is why it was done, I'm not saying it's going the right way, I'm not saying I agree with it. Because for eight and a half years, I watched all that money.
Well.
And now we have none there.
Yeah, that was probably something to consider.
So now.
That's another potential use for that ARPA money.
Very, very, now we passed the budget for July of this year.
So what do we tell?
So what we did?
What do we tell the treasurer about the taking of the funds for the repair, where is it coming from?
You put it into, you put it on a line, an expense line item, how much are the repairs?
Well, we figured, uh, I figured.
How much of the?
When I saw and the paperwork that I received from Melissa, that were about seven, eight thousand dollars for last year.
A year annually for maintenance.
Seven to eight thousand dollars.
Seven to eight.
So it's seven to eight thousand dollars?
No, I'm sorry. God worry.
Right, but right now, we probably owe like close to fifteen hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars.
That's what I was bitching about the, that they all.
Water bill is five hundred, seven hundred dollars.
Box, you know, she hits us with a water bill of hundreds of my dollars every quarter.
And right, we moved all the revenue into the town, town administration fund.
We got code three and I.
I wondered about that.
And there's a, there's an expense a minute in that place. That's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to analyze that to see if that can be minimized. We already minimized the expenses.
Be honest about where the expenses go. You can't make some.
I'm thinking about the line item.
That's terrible, what we do.
The topic of the line item, whatever.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta just.
Charge it to the school fund. And end up with the deficit, I know, it's got nothing in it. You're gonna, you're, you're gonna have an expense line item, it's gonna create a deficit.
Okay.
At the end of the year, we will look at where the money can come from to remove the deficit.
There you go, very good.
Can I ask, do you have any idea why these kinds of suggestions aren't coming from our treasurer?
Because she's not a trained accountant, she's not, she's soft heart. She's very good at, she's got a really good head on her shoulders. And she understands NEMRAC and she's very good. I've worked with her now, but the, a common theory, she goes, I think I should take accounting classes. I think, yeah, Melissa, take some accounting classes. But yeah, and this is, and she also has the benefit of working with an outside auditor in Newthing. Which is good, because anything, because they probably educate her to some extent.
I'm gonna listen along a little bit, cause it is getting late.
Sorry.
Um, not sorry, but. Alright, so, alright, so create a line item for the school deficit account for that, for those.
Yeah.
Alright, there's an RFP that was sent out for winter plowing and sanding for one year with a two-year option that you all have received. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, I'll put it in the newspaper.
Sounds good.
And we also have the same uh one year. Uh, for winter sands, I, I, I don't think I have a two-year option for winter sand, because it's a material.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a two-year. It's, it's just a one-year option for the material, is that okay? Alright, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the uh both RFPs, one for winter plowing and sanding and one for winter sand. We place in the newspaper as presented, any, uh, may I have a second?
I still can do.
Seconded by Paul, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, I do also want to say one other thing. I made a motion about the truck and how to pay for it, you guys can make another motion. We can vote on it and you might have three, I don't know. But I felt it was very, very important for me to say that I didn't want to have an additional burden on that, on that.
That's your head, that's your height.
Okay, I, I just, I, because I'm the one that's gonna be standing front of the audience.
Somebody can make a motion.
Maybe?
Okay, wanna discuss it, or do you want to finish all this first?
Let's finish everything and then, okay.
See if I still have. So this is passed, this is passed, unfinished business is done, communications. I received an email from Tom Kleines in response to my SOS, save our select board email back in May. Uh, he apologized for not writing sooner, but he'll be back in town in October. He's a great grant person, he said he'd be happy to work with us, and I said, well, I told him what we were doing. I looked him up, you should look him up too, C L Y N E S. He's a National Geographic explorer and photographer, pretty, pretty, yeah, pretty well versed person, so he's there. Uh, both Dan Towel and Alyssa Schmidt were concerned about uh the knotweed. I told him it wasn't gonna be on this agenda, but um I haven't met with Mr. Carr yet, but uh just to find out what's going on. Um, the M T A P, yes or no reply, we've already answered that. I contacted Jay Wilson when we weren't sure about Bayesian Brothers paving. And he suggested that the DMI, the Brattleboro, did the uh milling in, in, in Williamsville recently. And uh one of the residents who asked about the concern about safety of walkers and bikers on Grassy Brook Road. Uh, about signs and stuff and I, the, the logic solar signs are what Newthing uses and they cost about three thousand dollars each. That was just communication. Uh, agenda for the next meeting would be the interfire annual review.
Are we doing that as part of a regular?
I don't know, it's up to us, do you want to have a special meeting?
Um, oh, we have to have it, uh, can I make a point?
Yes.
I brought up this point and I'm not sure about this.
This?
I, I don't know, it's kind of small.
Yeah, it's different.
Basically, it's we are. Responsible to make sure they comply with Act two fifty, is that accurate? That's kind of what.
That's what the meeting's for.
That's what Guy was applying.
Yeah, we can have annual meetings to make sure they're compliant.
That's what I wanted to know.
So uh, put it part of the agenda and if, if it doesn't fit into the agenda, we can table it and have a special meeting then. And we'll, we'll say, anyone, I'll put it in part of the meeting for the next.
Okay.
Next meeting, uh, we'll do that.
Does that imply that we need to study Act two fifty permit that this entity was given and know the terms and conditions? That's it?
This is it, yeah.
Can we do a copy?
We have a copy, we have a copy, guys, guy, I asked guy for a copy. Okay. Um, I'm gonna do the, 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 Twitter fire, sand it, you be determined. Um, as far as other things, we'll talk about the Partagill. Um, paperwork on the salt, uh, and what other vendors we can find. We'll be talking about FEMA versus G I A on the. Warnings, uh, we, we'll communicate with the M T A P people, we'll talk about the website. We'll talk about line items being added to the budget and meeting with Melissa. And is there anything else the selector would like to do at this time, a story, a turn of the wheel?
No, with the knotweed, wait, let, let's put Dan on the agenda next time, because Paul and I have talked about it a little bit amongst. Between ourselves, knotweed, let's.
Now, now he's on the next agenda.
That'll be on the next agenda, because I think there's a discussion that should happen around that, that I've given it to thought.
I'll just find out, I'll just find out what other towns are doing too, and it may just be a limited thing that we can do. It's all in bloom right now, you can drive around, yes.
So, yeah.
My sense of that inquiry was also questioning the fact that. We apparently, in that person's view, did not authorize spending the money for that. To have it done by rehearsal or having it done by.
No, she didn't realize that we hadn't made a decision yet.
Well, yeah, I, I am assuming, I, I thought that we had conversed with Mr., what's?
Henry Carr.
And that he was gonna do some work for us, or someone had decided he's doing?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so that hasn't reached that point?
No.
I didn't know what she was talking, because I didn't remember making a, taking a vote like that.
No.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I sent out an email to Julie that said that we're gonna move the thing because of the ticks and then we're gonna do the mowing. And by the way, we're also gonna look at knotweed litigation.
Yeah, you mentioned it in conversation.
In, in an email.
She thought, oh my god, I'm in that.
So, so that was that. Um, and, alright, well, we can do, anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Yes, I have a question. After we, I'll do the best I can. After we financed, after we agreed to have a financing for the JBL. Uh, was an open question exactly with the exact total, I had. Finish my statement, what the exact total was that was coming out of ARPA for that deposit.
I have to have this, I have to have a talk with Melissa and make sure that it's all lined up, because I see things that are not lined up.
See, this is the problem, I'm ready to make a motion based on that, that understanding. And it could be sixty thousand left or eighty thousand left, that's a problem. I would like to make a proposal, but I can't make the proposal until I know what's in that budget.
I will, I will, just so you know, yeah, because I was thinking, I think the best solution, and I won't make this motion. Is for us to compromise on the level of the down payment.
I'm getting it.
If we, if we get to finance, that we, we finance less.
But I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the amount that we have in that guy.
But we need to make sure we're working off of good numbers, so I do think we need to table it to the next meeting.
Wait another two weeks.
I think we have to, and in the meantime, during the three weeks, I have plans already. Melissa's reached out to me with a couple of questions about how we move revenue. That she collected delinquent taxes, and I'll keep this brief. But if you remember in the past years, if you collect delinquent. Money within sixty days after the year ends, you get to count it into your closed fiscal year. And you do an accrual to pull it into last year's revenue. So our last year. Bottom line figures should. Look a little better. Because I asked her if she had done the accrual yet, and she said, no, she wasn't sure how to do it. So I said, I'll help you with that.
I want to be fair to everybody in this room, I want to be more fair, because that man and, and the town.
We know, we know, they're all the same.
We're all in the same field.
Alls I'm asking for is a number. And willing to make a proposal, I was going through the math, I don't remember.
What number are you?
Well, the, the dollar amount is of nine-three, is ninety-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-six.
Let's see.
Total fund balance, is this, is that the number that's in that account?
The, the bottom line, actually look at the top line, which tells you the cash. And the, the top line, there's only one line on this, on these, because their only assets are cash. So if you look at the very top line, this due from, that, that equals their share of the cash. The ARPA share of the cash and whatever bank account it's currently in, they're only.
And that number is?
It's ninety-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-six.
The money that we put down on that.
When did we purchase the thing?
This is after, yeah, this should, if she's done the journal entry. So we'll have to go back and look and make sure that she's pulled.
So I can make the proposal based on the numbers that I think, and if it's not accurate, we'll, we'll go through, alright?
You can say up to, up to, okay, here.
You said ninety-four thousand?
Just call it around ninety-four thousand.
Now, that changes, that changes the equation a lot, but you're.
It would be nice to be done with it.
Yeah, well, I'm into that. Why don't we settle at a twenty, I'm really compromising, a twenty-four thousand dollar down and make it seventy grand. Left in our budget. If that is what the number is. And that means we only finance X amount of dollars, we're gonna also do your business.
Do, do it another way, don't say what's left in our, because you, you're not sure of that.
The only question I have, I would have made it a smaller amount, because if you're gonna put twenty-four thousand, you may as well do thirty-three thousand.
What's that?
You're gonna do twenty-four thousand, yeah, may as well take the whole thing with thirty-three thousand.
You, it's, the amount is so.
Okay.
Consequences.
If that's an accurate number.
Yeah, it's gonna be. How much within five, four thousand, five thousand?
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna kick his over the brain.
Stan, can I give the financial?
Okay. Baby.
Which one is?
How am I gonna make a motion?
What is the amount of ARPA?
It's the last page.
You, thanks, you have the budget staff.
I want, we change, I can't do that.
Well, I think the financial thing, I'm not sure if it's good.
That's the budget staff.
That's what it's called, it's for the finance. Okay, so what I'm looking for, change in the finance besides twenty percent.
Um, I can't do it that way, I don't know, is this total accurate, we don't know. You're basing, I'm basing that on, a figure on Doc's.
I, I think I have the answer for you, whether the money has been taken out of ARPA. That's what we're looking for.
Because if, if we have ninety-four grand, I'm more inclined to move that back up.
The excavator purchase money that came out of the ARPA fund. In September. And this is, I don't, I don't know, this should be year-to-date, I think, is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Is that the amount you told her to pay? Okay, then the ARPA fund balance is accurate.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Stan.
Excellent.
What's that?
I'll make a proposal when we pay, but just like, what do you want to do?
We made a motion on the floor for Mr. Mall to use thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars of our funds.
I forgot one thing, we haven't figured in that total, the uh plates and chips, so we don't do it.
That would have to, I would expense that.
Okay.
I would expense that from the highway fund, equipment, that'll be.
So that would leave us sixty-one thousand roughly in the, I'm fine with it. So. The motion on the floor for thirty.
I'm gonna kiss you later.
No, you're not, you won't. This is what you're gonna ask me.
Spanish, what is it, the Spanish?
The teddy bear.
Okay.
I make a motion, can we?
You pissed me off the last three weeks, we're not gonna get into that.
We have a motion.
This didn't have to happen.
To spend thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars of ARPA funds to purchase the five-fifty truck. Uh, Ford pickup truck for the town of Brooklyn, may I have a second?
Well, I'll go.
Make the motion, I'll second it. Any discussion, hallelujah. All those in favor of, 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 of voting to agree to spending thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars of ARPA money. Uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?